Recording in progress.
Chair Williams, we're good to go.
All right, thank you. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Planning Commission this Tuesday evening, October 11th. I now call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Welcome, everybody. Mary, would you please call the roll?
Chair Williams.
Present.
Vice Chair McNutter.
Present.
Commissioner Nugent.
Present.
Commissioner Patel.
Present.
Commissioner Wiggins.
Present.
All right, thank you. Okay, good evening once again and welcome. We are happy to be here in person with options for virtual participation as well. So there's several ways to participate. For those attending in person, there are three ways to sign up to speak. Number one, you can complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. Or number two, sign in using the iPad at the back of the council chamber. Or number three, you can scan the QR code, which is on a sign located at the back of the chamber also. So if you're participating remotely tonight, you can raise your hand. Sorry, you can use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you'll be called upon at the appropriate time. If you're calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and then when you are called upon to speak, you can press star six to unmute yourself. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. Okay, next on our agenda is the public comment period, and this is for general items that are not on the agenda. So members of the public that wish to comment on any item that's not appearing on the agenda may address the Planning Commission at this time. State law prevents the Planning Commission from taking any action on a matter that's not on the agenda, but your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. The target limit for the public comment period is 15 minutes. However, additional time for public comment can be provided, or the time per speaker may be reduced to allow members of the public to speak if we need to. So at this time, are there any members of the public that would like to speak about anything that's not currently on the agenda?
There are no public speakers via Zoom or in the audience.
Okay, great. So we will close that public comment period, and we'll move on to the study session for item one. Item one is a pre-application review. Can you go ahead and introduce the first item for me?
Sure. Pre-application review, PA 2022-023 for proposed commercial, office, and residential mixed-use development at 401 to 445 South B Street, bespoke.
Thank you. So I'll just mention that this is a pre-application study session to learn more about this proposed development and receive public comments at this time, and also for the Planning Commission to provide input and comments on the proposed project and the design. The order of this item tonight will be, as usual, the staff presentation, and then the applicant presentation, and then there's an opportunity for clarifying questions from planning commissioners. And then we'll go to public comments at that time, and then the Planning Commission deliberation. So as I said, this item is a study session, so there will be no action taken on the proposal tonight, but that's a chance to provide comments. The applicant will be given up to 15 minutes to present, and all members of the public will be given two to three minutes, depending on the total number of speakers we have when we open it up to the public. So at this time, I'll open it up to staff.
Good evening, planning commissioners and members of the public. My name is Manira Sandhir. I'm the Planning Manager for the city with the Community Development Department, and I'll be doing the presentation on behalf of Julia Klein, who's our principal planner and the project planner. She's off today, but that's why I'm here to present. So starting with the proposed project and the project location, this particular project is a public-private partnership project, as defined in the staff report, through the exclusive negotiating agreement that the city and the applicant has entered into to provide for affordable housing on part of the block that is city-owned. The project is bounded by four different streets, so it's between Fourth and Fifth Avenue, as well as B Street and Railroad Avenue, in the area of the city that's within the downtown retail core. So the general plan land use designation is downtown retail core for the site, and the zoning is central business district with a residential overlay. The lot size is approximately 1.16 acres, and the current existing uses on-site include the public parking lot at Fourth Avenue, as well as some commercial uses such as the restaurants, retail, as well as the former tablets, toy store, and cyclical. To provide some further context, as you can see, this particular block is divided into the city-owned site, which fronts Railroad Avenue, as well as East Fourth Avenue, and that's the public parking lot that currently exists, as well as the privately-owned parcels that span the rest of the block. On the right are general renderings that show the proposed project. So the proposal before you tonight, again, it's a study session, so these are early conceptual plans that the applicant has proposed, is for a mixed-use development project. It includes a total floor area of approximately 230,000 square feet. A floor area ratio, also referred to as FAR, of 4.6, and includes two buildings. Building one, which is the residential component of the project, is proposed to be seven stories tall, approximately 76 feet to the plate height, proposes ground-floor nonprofit use for the elderly, and then also 60 units above that include a mix of studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units. So Building one is approximately 65,000 square feet. And then Building two, which is the commercial component of the project and includes office and retail on the ground floor, is proposed at five stories, although approximately still 74 feet height, and is approximating about 160,000 square feet. There is an underground garage under both of these buildings that is proposing 37 residential parking spaces with the use of mechanical puzzle lift systems, as well as 128 spaces for the commercial and office component. Just to provide further context, this particular block is surrounded by a variety of uses that vary in height, from one-story retail to up to three stories with restaurants, salons, architects' offices. There is also, to the east of the railroad tracks, the Kikuk Crossing project that is currently under construction, which is a seven-story multifamily 100% affordable housing development, as well as a five-level Fifth Avenue garage that's a city project. To the west of the site is the existing Drager's Market. There is also a planning application that is currently being reviewed by staff for a five-story mixed-use development at that site. And kitty corner to the southwest of this project is a six-story multifamily housing development. So this proposed project would be subject to a number of codes and policies that the city currently has in place, including the general plan, downtown area plan, of course, standards and requirements under the zoning ordinance. The site is located within the central parking improvement district, so there are certain requirements that would apply. The site is within the retail core of the downtown, so it is subject to the design guidelines that were adopted by the city council, and then also the pedestrian and bicycle masterplans. The applicant is also requesting a number of concessions and waivers under the state density bonus law. And since this project is proposing residential 60 units of 100% affordable housing, there is AB 1763, which also applies to this project, which allows for unlimited density bonus as it's located within a half-mile of transit, and also allows for height increases up to 33 feet or three stories. This project, although it's not on the slide, but I want to clarify that it is not subject to the Housing Accountability Act because the total square footage of the housing component of the project is less than 2/3 of the total square footage of the project site. So the different entitlements that are required for this project include a special use permit, as there is a nonprofit use proposed along Fourth Avenue, which is part of the city's retail frontage area, and there are certain findings that the Planning Commission would have to make, or rather, the city council, since this would require city council approval, would have to make to approve the project, specifically that the use would not adversely affect general health, safety, and welfare. It would not cause injury or disturbance to adjacent properties. And I believe there's a third one that it's also similar in terms of what the other uses are that are allowed in the retail areas. Since this is the entire redevelopment of this block, and there are new buildings and site improvements proposed, the project is also subject to the site plan and architectural review. And some of the findings focus on how the development of the site is how it relates to the neighborhood and whether or not it's in scale and harmonious with the neighborhood. There are also requirements that it should conform to the general plan and also meet the density bonus requirements of state law. And then the third entitlement that's expected for this project is a site development planning application that is associated with removal of trees, and then also regarding replacement tree plantings that improve the visual relationship with the other development in the vicinity of the site. Some of the areas that staff has flagged for the applicant, as well as for the Planning Commission, include the architectural design of both the buildings, location of the residential open space that's proposed. The current garage has one accessway from Railroad Avenue. And then in general, just the changes in the public right-of-way and how the project interacts with the sidewalks, the on-street loading, streetlights, street trees, et cetera. And then finally, as noted previously, the applicant has submitted a density bonus request, which would be reviewed thoroughly to ensure that the concessions and the waivers requested meet the state law and are necessary to move the project forward. So first focusing on the design, this slide just shows the four different elevations of the entire block. And as you can see, the project has a very contemporary, modern style of architecture. A lot of glass is proposed. The Railroad Avenue side, you can see that the office building, if you compare the Railroad Avenue with the South B Street, there is variation in how the office building is designed. There are some brick veneers that are used on the South B Street. There are more step backs. There is landscaping, green walls, and a variety of materials that are used. However, on the railroad, the office side that's facing Railroad Avenue, and as well as East Fifth Avenue, it's primarily glass and curtain walling. The design, and I'm sorry, I'm not able to pull up my laser pointer, otherwise I would have... Oh, it's here. I can pull it up. So the housing component, the residential component, can be seen from the Railroad Avenue and the East Fourth Avenue side, and that is also contemporary. However, it seems to lack any articulation that you may have seen in other housing projects in that area. These are also some renderings that just show the perspective views of the project. And again, these are conceptual plans. Once the applicant receives input from the Planning Commission, there might be further evolution of the design. This slide shows the different kinds of materials that are proposed. So of course, there's a lot of curtain wall glazing. There is some wood-clad storefronts proposed along the retail frontage, which is along the South B Street facade, and then also some brick components intermixed with cement plaster, metal panels, et cetera. Moving on to the open space and landscaping component, so the project is proposing some landscaping in the public right-of-way area, and there is publicly accessible, privately-maintained open space proposed at the corner of Fourth and South B Street, called out here in blue. Some of the red areas that the applicant has called out as open space areas are required for entryways to meet building code requirements, and therefore, staff will be working closely with the applicants to verify that the project meets the open space requirements under the zoning ordinance. For the residential building, the open space amenity is proposed on the second floor, so it's above the garage podium. So if this is Railroad Avenue, this is Fourth Street, so this is sort of this green area shows the open space that's proposed as an amenity terrace for the residential uses. Since it fronts Railroad Avenue, staff is concerned about what kind of noise implications may occur in the use of this area, and of course, that would be evaluated through the formal application process. Diving a little bit deeper into the floor plans, so the residential building, which is Building one, has the Self-Help for the Elderly proposed as a ground-floor use, or the first floor, the street-level use. And that's about 11,000 square feet with different uses, as shown here, that would support that use. The driveway access from Railroad Avenue is also proposed at this level. And then there is a little space that's going to be open to the garage. These are the residential floor plans, levels two and three to seven. And as noted previously, there are about 13 units proposed that are studios, as well as one-bedrooms, or 13 of each kind, and then 17 of the two-bedrooms and the three-bedrooms are also proposed. There is a zoning code requirement for street wall setbacks. However, the applicant has requested density bonus waivers from that request. These are some floor plans that show the commercial component, so along the South B Street frontage, there is retail uses proposed, and then the rest of the building is proposed to be office from levels, not just one and two, but all the way up to, I believe it was six, six levels. And there are street wall waivers requested for the commercial part of the building as well. This slide shows the underground garage and the parking that's proposed. So again, access from Railroad Avenue. This is the site where the applicant is proposing mechanical puzzle lift systems to accommodate the parking needs for the residential project, and the rest is proposed as office. This shows the existing patterns along the public right-of-way that are adjacent to the project. As we all know, we have a really nice grid pattern in the downtown. The existing street pattern includes diagonal parking spaces. They're typically matching sidewalk pavement materials, and you can sort of see that, like the brick materials along the sidewalks, which provides a cohesive visual and consistent pedestrian experience in our downtown retail core. The corner sidewalks also have like a similar bulb-out design that acts as a street coming amenity, but also provides spaces for the diagonal parking spaces. This is just another view of the same typography that exists throughout our downtown retail core. And the project would be subject to the requirements within the pedestrian masterplan, which includes along B Street, Fourth Avenue, as well as Fifth Avenue, recommended sidewalk width of 16 to 26 feet. The applicant is proposing to maintain the existing widths along the Fourth and Fifth Avenue frontages. However, for B Street, the applicant is proposing to expand the sidewalk into the parking areas and convert that into parallel parking spaces, so that is something that staff will be working with the applicant on to see how to maintain the typography in that area. And then along Railroad Avenue, the proposal is to increase the sidewalk width to six feet. This slide shows the bicycle masterplan. At this point, city council has directed staff to reevaluate the bike route that was originally planned for B Street to another option, so that's no longer affecting the project. But there could be requirements along Fifth Avenue, as well as perhaps a shared bike facility along Railroad that would be incorporated into the design of the project. So as required, under our pre-application process, the applicant did conduct a neighborhood meeting on September 1st. There were approximately 26 attendees, and a number of the areas that were touched upon included concerns regarding the building design, especially the height and scale, as well as the overall architectural style and the quality of materials that were proposed. There was also concern that the commercial and office building looked very similar to recently constructed buildings and that there was too much of one style that was being propagated around downtown and not keeping the historic context in mind. There were also concerns about parking and about lack of onsite parking spaces and potential spillover into neighborhoods, concerns about the garage entrance being from Railroad Avenue and the interface with potential future great separation project. There were comments relating to maximizing the number of housing units, and then generally support for wider sidewalks and additional bike lane improvements. So with that, the intent of this Planning Commission study session is to focus on the project and the building design in particular. What kind of architectural design and detailing, building articulation, massing, materials and colors of the two buildings should be considered as the project evolves through this process? Do the designs provide enough distinction from recent projects in the area? It should be noted that a number of the recent projects in the area have been east of the railroad, which is outside the downtown core, whereas this particular project is within the downtown retail core. So there are specific guidelines that apply to this project. And in addition, I would also like to state that since this is not a Housing Accountability Act project, the Planning Commission doesn't have to limit itself to objective design standards, but can provide more richer comments about the design. And since it's also a public-private partnership, that the city has more leverage in terms of the kind of design that the city can ask for. The second question for design is whether the buildings should take inspiration from or otherwise relate to buildings in the nearby downtown historic district. There are some examples of other projects in the vicinity that have stepped back or have incorporated traditional elements. So if Planning Commission has any suggestions there, that those would be appreciated. And then if any concerns about the usability of the rooftop terrace, of course, staff would be evaluating that for general plan conformance through the formal application process. The second part of the discussion is to focus on the site plan, such as the driveway access, the open space areas, and how the project relates to the neighboring typography, including sidewalk widths, landscaping, et cetera. And then, of course, anything else that the Planning Commission would wish to consider in keeping with the findings that would be required to approve the project. This concludes staff's presentation. I would like to introduce Kathy Kleimbahn, who's our Assistant City Manager and here today to answer any questions about the ENA, the exclusive negotiated agreement. Thank you.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'll ask the applicant if they would like to provide a presentation.
Kim, are you okay?
Yes.
Great.
Go right ahead. Welcome.
Do you have a clicker? Okay. Last time it didn't work. Yeah, I'm not sure. This one, right? Don't you hold down a power button or something? There we go. Awesome. All right. Thank you, Planning Commission Chair and Commissioners, for giving us the opportunity to present our development proposal to you this evening. My name is Preston O'Connell. I'm with Harvest Properties. And I'll be part of the team that is presenting the bespoke project to you, located at Fourth and B Street. We're very excited to get your input and realize this is a starting point of a larger discussion. The bespoke project is an exciting collaboration between Harvest Properties, the city of San Mateo, Alta Housing, and Self-Help for the Elderly, who will introduce themselves in a moment. For background, Harvest is a Bay Area developer with a long history of working in local communities. As an example, we recently entitled a project in San Mateo where we demolished 225,000 square feet of office space and replaced it with 290 units of entry-level housing. This project will provide a meaningful impact on helping reverse the jobs-housing imbalance. Additionally, we are a local stakeholder with many folks that live in the community, so we have a long-term interest in the success of San Mateo. I'm also joined by our design team that includes our architect RMW and BDE, plus our landscape team at Place. They're here as a resource, and I would encourage the Planning Commission and public to ask them any questions related to our design approach. I'd like to hand it over to my partners at Alta Housing and then Self-Help for the Elderly to introduce themselves.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm Carlos Castellanos. I'm with Alta Housing. And Alta Housing, since 1970, has been working exclusively in the Peninsula and the Silicon Valley area in providing affordable housing. Currently, we manage all of our properties, and we serve over 2,500 residents. And we have over 900 units that are currently occupied in our portfolio, and we have another 500 that are in our pipeline. And we also provide our own resident services, and we really focus on health, wellness, and the advancement of our particular clients, our residents in succeeding in life. And I'll pass it on to Ani.
Thank you, Preston, and thank you, Carlos. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Annie Chung, and I'm the CEO of Self-Help for the Elderly. I'm just here quickly to introduce ourselves to you. We've been operating the senior center and a multipurpose senior activity center at Central Park. We're in the clubhouse, right next to the Japanese garden. Self-Help started in 1966, so this is our 56th anniversary. And we serve close to about 40,000 seniors a year in five Bay Area counties. At San Mateo Senior Center, we've built a very robust, vibrant, and really loving and welcome community. We serve close to about 2,000 seniors from the San Mateo program. We provide congregant meals, home-delivered meals, a lot of activities and classes, but also social services and health insurance counseling, called the High Cap Project. So we're very excited, and thank you, President, for Harvest to provide a permanent home in the new center for us because San Mateo Central Park, the clubhouse, is going to be torn down in a few years. And we're really happy that we found a permanent home in the Harvest project. We hope that you will support us because the seniors need a permanent home, and with the aging population, Harvest team has been working with us to...
to provide affordable housing, so we're doing that through our family-friendly housing that we'll talk more about in a moment, plus providing a pretty generous contribution of commercial linkage fees that could be used around the community to help catalyze other affordable housing developments, working with local non-for-profit Self Help for the Elderly to provide a permanent space in the downtown. We heard that really activating the retail corridor and environment along the B Street is really important, so we're going to have a hyper-local strategy to our retail approach, and with the focus of really energizing the pedestrian experience along that corridor, doing development where it makes sense and concentrating that around transit. So we think with our location being near Caltrain, whether you look at the scenario A, B, or C that's being studied or a combination in the general plan right now, all of them contemplate about 15,000 new jobs coming into San Mateo. And we think we have a unique opportunity in this location to take advantage of the infrastructure that surrounds us. One statistic that we came across recently that was pretty interesting to me is that about 85% of the folks that live in San Mateo actually commute somewhere else to go work. And so what we like to do is really elevate the quality of the commercial space to allow them to work here, reducing traffic, greenhouse gas, and other negative impacts. Some of this has already been covered, but I'll just quickly touch on it. We're about four blocks, obviously, from Caltrain and encumber an entire city block, and we're right next to the established B Street retail corridor, and therefore we have all the infrastructure for doing a higher-density project where we think this really makes sense, which also reduces pressure for growth in the surrounding neighborhoods. As mentioned earlier, for the area context, a lot of the buildings that surround us are between five and seven stories, including the project proposal directly across the street. So we think we fit within the context of the neighborhood that surrounds us. So one of the things we like to do before designing a project is do this kind of visioning effort. And so what we think about is we go into the project's history to see how that might inform where it may be headed in the future, and see if we could take some of the design cues. And this block has been hosed to a wonderful variety of small businesses over the years. And so we think that there's a unique opportunity to kind of bring that back in and curate it in an interesting way. It acts as, this site acts as kind of the bookend to the historic district on B Street, and therefore is an opportunity to create a wonderful gathering point for the community and could be a location for a variety of retail uses that really create a 24/7 experience that could be restaurants, a music and art venue, and other community service-facing opportunities. So a little bit of a project overview, as you can see here, the way we proposed our project is you have retail that goes the entire full city block between Fourth and Fifth Avenue on B Street. We have a large plaza there at the corner that we think is a great opportunity to curate retail that could really interact with that public space and, again, make a kind of a gathering point for folks within the community. Retail then also returns down Fourth Avenue towards Railroad, where we also have the Self Help for the Elderly space. One of the questions that we've actually gotten from the community that I want to just acknowledge here is why have we located the housing where it is? Well, it was really important to the city that the housing be located on the city's own land, which is right there at the corner of Fourth and Railroad. So we've located the housing there, as well as the Self Help for the Elderly space, which works very synergistically with that use. Quickly talking about the public realm, one of the things that we think is a unique opportunity is to really energize and expand that pedestrian corridor. And so right now, the sidewalk is roughly 10 feet wide. It really doesn't provide enough space to really program that space and have it be successful and really interact with the retail. And so along B Street, you see, even in the middle of the block, we've widened it out to approximately 16 feet. And then at the corners there, it's much wider. You have the plaza that's much deeper and could be a great space for the community. And then on the other side, too, you have that large bulb out. And then that condition that is along the commercial frontage is roughly along Fourth Avenue, is also about 12 feet wide. So trying to acknowledge the pedestrian master design guidelines and program that space with rich landscaping and other opportunities to elevate the energy there. So I'm going to quickly hand it over to Alta Housing for a moment.
Thank you. Yeah, at Alta Housing, we really emphasize the building, our buildings, that they're built in a way that they're well-designed, well-managed, and that they also integrate well with the community. And here's some examples of our more recent developments in Mountain View and Redwood City. And in addition to that, Alta Housing, as I mentioned before, provides our own resident services. And really, the resident services for families that would be offered at bespoke would be education and wellness programs, and really geared towards all ages, and providing residents the opportunity for job coaching, fitness, nutrition programs, and after-school homework clubs. See if I do this right? Thank you. Did I turn it off? I might have done that. There it is. All right. So a little bit of an overview on the housing, the affordable housing here. First of all, we're looking at 100% affordable housing here, as already has been mentioned. And, excuse me, the family income ranges would be from 30% of the area median up to 80% of the area median. And meaning family, the family-friendly means that it's at least 50% of the units are two- and three-bedroom units. We're also providing indoor amenities for the residents, such as a residential lobby, a multipurpose room, youth room, laundries. We'll have a management and services, separate offices, so that both will be operating there. We'll have a manager and a resident service coordinator at the same time. And I will continue on to the next slide. We also are looking at amenities on the, as was shared before, on the podium deck, and we're really looking at this as having it a multi-generational opportunity here, where we have it zoned for different levels of activity. So you have more active children's play area, then you have an area that's more just for seating and has some shade and opportunities to interact that way. In addition to that, as you may be able to see there, and maybe in your plans, you saw that we have a multipurpose room that is right off of the courtyard area, and that's where we really have this indoor-outdoor synergy going on, where we would have that as just gatherings for the residents of the building, and also their after-school educational programs would happen there. We'd have discussions and opportunities to deal with food security and health and wellness programs that would happen indoor and outdoor, using the indoor space as well as the outdoor space. So I'll turn it back over to Preston now.
Thank you. So one of the things I want to quickly touch on is how's the commercial working synergistically with the housing? What it's doing is really, it's providing a lot of stability for funding sources to make sure that the housing actually gets built, as well as for the self-help elderly space. So we'll be subsidizing that portion of the space. We'll also be providing about $4 million in commercial linkage fees. In addition to that, that's per the city's fee schedule. The city can leverage those funds to be used elsewhere within the community. Separately from that, we'll be providing up to $2.9 million in developer-funded community benefit to cover any potential shortfalls. After our RFP with the city, after we were selected, we went back and assembled the balance of the block, which was important to the city, so that that block could be looked at holistically. And we electively came back and said, hey, you know, we might be able to, through the efficiencies of assembling the block, get about another 20% of unit density here to get about 60 units of family-friendly housing. And obviously, everyone was really enthusiastic about that opportunity. The last point I'll quickly touch on here is the commercial will be subsidizing the subterranean parking component to keep the affordable housing competitive for securing state and federal financing. And this last part is really, really important, because that funding source between the state and federal government has become really competitive and makes up about 70% approximately of the overall funding for a typical affordable housing project. And it's turned into a beauty contest, and you basically have to score perfectly in order to secure that funding, and the tiebreaker score is usually a function of cost. And so the office will really allow the residential terrain competitive in that component by continuing to, through scale, and helping subsidize some of that common infrastructure like parking. Let's transition into the project design. We agree with a lot of the public comments that the goal should be to find a balance point between a building that meets the needs of today...
I just wanted to let you know, there's about two minutes left.
Okay, I didn't see the clock turn, so I'll go quickly. But pay homage to the historical references within the downtown. While we acknowledge that further refinement is needed, we have genuinely attempted to bridge the gap between the historical vernacular, which you see with the lower three-story brick-falling along B Street, and the opportunity to showcase what could potentially be the first mass timber project in the city of San Mateo. For context, mass timber means that the building structure, i.e. the ceiling, the columns, the beams, are made all from wood that is sustainably grown or harvested. This means you'll see little steel or concrete in the building. I mean, think about how wonderful it would be to walk into a retail space on the ground floor and be surrounded by Austrian spruce or Douglas fir. For this reason, we use glass on the recessed portions of the building and expose wood features on the upper terraces to highlight the mass timber design. To our team, it would feel like a travesty to cover up this beautiful material and conceal it from the public, so we've blended traditional materials with a more contemporary design.
I'm going to have to let you know, time's up.
Okay. So...
Just come to a closure, please.
Sure, I'll skip ahead. So I guess in summary, and what I'll do is I'll just quickly flip through a couple of these. You can see here at the corner plaza, what we've really tried to do is create a space that could be well-activated, that could interact with the indoor/outdoor space of the building and create that gathering point I talked about earlier, and really energize the pedestrian corridor. Here, you can see how the conditions of that pedestrian experience really extends across the whole block, really trying to elevate it, all the way down to Fifth Avenue with the opportunity to hopefully carry that energy kind of past Fifth in the future. We've really kept the architecture on B Street as a three-story condition that has more traditional materials, and we've really recessed the more contemporary style and pushed it back, and we are using some components of the glass to really highlight that. And you can see the landscaping that runs from the ground plane up into the building. Here, you can see the Fifth and B Street corridor.
I have to ask you to bring it to a close.
Okay. So in summary, I think what we're trying to do is have a project that really meets a lot of the needs of what the city's looking for around affordable housing, doing it where it makes sense around transit, using sustainable technologies, and doing it in a way that really helps activate the pedestrian corridor. And we will welcome the opportunity to answer any more questions that we get a chance to on the design, if that would be appropriate. Thank you.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you so much. So that, there was a lot of information there, so thank you for that. Okay, at this time, we will open it up to, oh, I think I'm supposed to ask about clarifying questions first. Do any of the planning commissioners have any clarifying questions for either staff or the applicant? Who would like to go first? Commissioner Ebner?
Thank you. Through the chair. So as the project pertains to AB 1763 with the unlimited density bonus, is the project, does the density bonus apply to the residential and the commercial?
The density bonus is for the residential units.
Okay. So with the residential units, I think we're now showing a 75-foot height, which one is the 76-foot top of plate, which could, with the bonus, be 88 feet, correct? You take the 55 and the 33?
That is correct. There are several factors to consider, however, Commissioner Ebner. So the project is located in an area of the city, which allows for up to 75 feet with community benefits. And then with the density bonus law under AB 1763, the applicant gets 33 feet additional. So depending on whether the benchmark starts at 55 feet or 75, it's 33 feet additional.
Okay. So the benchmark could be 75 with appropriate public benefits?
That is correct.
Okay. And what would be the maximum height for the commercial property?
It's the same. So it's 55 feet with no public benefits, it's 75 feet with community benefits. However, this is also, the applicant is also requesting density bonus concessions and waivers, so staff would have to look at that carefully. Again, this is preliminary application, so we haven't done the full review, and we don't have all the details on how the concessions and waivers are justified, but they could ask for concessions and waivers from the standard for the commercial component. We would have to look into it.
Perfect. Thank you. That was the only question I had for now.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Patel?
Through the chair, thank you. I have a few questions. Some of these might be for staff, some of these might be for applicant. So one clarifying question on sidewalk width. I heard mentioned in the staff presentation that the frontage along B Street, the sidewalk will be expanded to eat into the angled parking spaces, but the staff report noted that, as presently designed, the project proposes to maintain existing sidewalk widths to continue the pattern of build-to-line of buildings on adjacent blocks. So I just want to make sure I understand whether or not the sidewalk on B Street is going to get expanded.
That might be a question for the applicant. I believe the maintaining of the sidewalk is along the Fourth and Fifth frontages, but I know Julia is closer to the project than I am, so perhaps the applicant can speak to it.
So we'll be, just be consistent with the datum of the historic corridor that surrounds us. The building frontage will be on our property boundary, and then what we're proposing is we'll, as part of the bike lane reconfiguration, that allows us to widen the street out, or the sidewalk out to approximately 16 feet by reorienting from angled parking to parallel parking. And then at the corner of Fourth and B, we're going to have the plaza that obviously carves back into our property, and then as you return down Fourth Avenue, we are actually carving back along our commercial frontage to create a wider sidewalk condition as well.
Great. While you're up here, one of my questions is definitely for you.
Okay.
So I'll ask that one now. You mentioned in your presentation that you'll be paying a $4.3 million commercial linkage fee towards affordable housing. Is that specifically for this project?
No.
Does that go toward future projects?
The city can do whatever they like with it, so they could leverage those funds in another public-private partnership like this one to use for anything they see fit.
Is the applicant contributing funding to the affordable housing in this project?
Yeah, the 2.9 million plus the subsidy of the subterranean parking, which is pretty meaningful.
Okay, so just making sure I have the numbers correct. 2.9 million towards this project and 4.3 million towards the commercial linkage fee for future projects.
Right, plus the parking cost, which is a pretty big number.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple more questions, but I think these are for staff. So the approvals process for these two buildings, are they enjoined together, or are they separate? And this kind of piggybacks, I think, on your question, Commissioner Ebner, because I was also curious, is this one project, is this two project? Can the office get the bonus from the residential? How are these actually being entitled and approved?
Through the chair, this is one project. The applicant is proposing one project. It's a mixed-use project that focuses on the redevelopment of the entire block. It has a residential component, which is Building 1, but also the commercial component, which is Building 2, and then a common garage that's underneath both those buildings. Therefore, they are linked, and we would have to review carefully the density bonus request to see how they are linked and how it meets the intent of the state law.
I'll just add on to that and just note that, under the density bonus law, incentives and concessions are geared towards a determination that they are necessary to provide for affordable housing costs. So as we get, when we get a formal application, that will have to be evaluated in the context of that state density bonus law requirement.
Perfect, thank you. I think the combination of what you both just said...
And we would have to review carefully the density bonus request to see how they're linked and how it meets the intent of the state law.
I'll just add on to that and just note that, under the density bonus law, incentives and concessions are geared towards a determination that they are necessary to provide for affordable housing costs. So as we get, when we get a formal application, that will have to be evaluated in the context of that state density bonus law requirement.
Perfect, thank you. I think the combination of what you both just said answers my next question, but that question was going to be about one of the requested concessions or waivers, I'm not sure the difference between the two. But the applicant is requesting an additional 1.5-floor area ratio. And because that is being requested through the density, residential density bonus laws, I was curious if the state laws require that FAR to be used for residential purposes, or if that FAR can be used anywhere in the project for any purpose.
I'll start and then turn it over to our city attorney. So I'm not quite certain if they're proposing it as a concession or a waiver, but there are, there is a distinction between the two. So as Prasanna pointed out, concessions are granted if they can show that they are reducing the costs of building the affordable units versus waivers, which are requested or granted if they would physically preclude the development of the project. So there are certain nuances that go into, you know, both those requests. And we would have to look at it carefully to see which category the applicant is requesting it under and whether it meets the intent of the state law. But in terms of a project as a whole, my understanding is that the state law does allow for concessions that could apply to the commercial component of a mixed-use residential development project as well.
And just briefly adding on to that, so yes, again, it's tied to the providing for affordable housing costs. But in terms of the difference between incentives and concessions and waivers, so incentives and concessions, the number is formula-based. So the more affordable units are provided, the more incentives or concessions can be, the applicant is entitled to under state law. There are also additional reductions in site development standards that are allowed under our own density bonus ordinance. But the idea is, in exchange for providing affordable units, you get a certain number of opportunities to reduce site development standards. And then waivers are unlimited, but they are to, we cannot impose a requirement that would preclude a utilization of, say, the density bonus or the incentive for concession. But there is not a numerical limit on waivers.
To add to that through the chair, so this particular project, being an AB 1763 project, is, can avail itself of four concession requests.
Thank you, I have one last question. So this, the site is 1.16 acres. And I was curious, under Measure Y, what is the maximum number of units that could be built on this site?
The density requirements are stated, let me pull up the attachment there. If you would give me just one second. So the density requirements for this site are capped at 50 dwelling units per acre or 75 dwelling units per acre with the provision of public benefit?
Right, so if I've done my math right, I think that's either 58 without the density bonus or 87 with.
Yes, 58 without the community benefits, correct. The base density is 58 units for the site.
Thank you, those are all of my questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, do you have some questions?
Yes, through the chair. So this is the first time this project has come up before a planning commission. Has this project or this site gone before the city council for any purpose?
Yes, it has gone before the city council for the exclusive negotiating agreement. And I'll turn it over to Kathy to speak more to it.
It went before the city council as part of the selection of the development team, but the design concept itself has not been before the city council. But the basic parameters of, I believe there was a rough square footage of commercial, the mix of uses, the location of the uses, were all before the city council as part of the developer selection process.
Thank you. And then, would you be able to very briefly describe the criteria that the city council and staff used to decide, to choose this particular development team? Perhaps maybe just looking at the surplus land act matrix that they used, so some of them.
Sure, so when this development team was selected, we were looking at three total developments. Two were exclusively on the city-owned property and were also 100% affordable, which was one of the requirements of city council. This particular development team was selected for a number of reasons. One was the city council felt the ability to develop the whole block was very important. We were concerned that if just the city-owned parcel was developed and we knew that this particular development team was already planning to move forward with something on the Talbets site, that the remaining two parcels on the block would be very challenging to ever redevelop. And having those remain as one-story buildings with five-to-seven-story buildings adjacent to them was perhaps not the highest and best use for the downtown. So that was definitely a strong consideration. The city council also appreciated the residential parking that was able to be provided by this project. It was a higher amount of parking for the residential units, which we have found a lot of the affordable housing in this area still requires some parking. And, let's see. And then I think another consideration also was that they were willing to go up to 80% of area median income instead of capping at 60%, which allows for a little bit of the missing middle to be addressed in their target population.
Thank you. Were there any stipulations or requests on the use composition of the privately-owned portions of the project beyond what is required of the city's current general plan?
No.
Were there any stipulations or requests regarding the architectural style, design or materials?
No.
Okay, thank you. The next question is just a follow-up to a couple of the other questions, just so I have full clarity on how the density bonus law concessions are applying to the commercial portion. So will it be the project applicant, will the project applicant need to show that their additional height and FAR is somehow contributing to the ability of the affordable housing development to produce the number of units that it is planned to produce?
If they're requesting it as a concession, yes. However, if they're requesting it as a waiver, then they would have to demonstrate that denying that waiver would physically preclude construction of the project.
And by construction of the project, it means that some sort of project could go forward feasibly, not necessarily the project that is proposed?
There, it is nuanced. I believe it is the project as proposed. However, we will look at it carefully. Again, this is pre-application, we have a preliminary letter that doesn't fully justify each of the requests. So we will be, we have asked the applicant as part of the formal application to provide more justification for each request.
Okay, I asked that question because maybe an applicant comes forward with a 100-story building and says, "If you don't give me these waivers, I can't produce this 100-story building, so you need to give me these waivers." But I don't think that's what the case is.
Right, so again, like if you think of it as the more affordable units that are provided, you get a set number of incentives and concessions, generally up to four under state law, and then an additional six potentially under our own density bonus ordinance. And those incentives or concessions, when you look at the whole project, have to result in identifiable and actual cost reductions to provide for affordable housing, either costs or rents. And then the waivers are to ensure that a city standard is not being applied so as to preclude utilization of the incentives or concessions or utilization of the density bonus. So the waiver has to be tied to one of those things. It's not necessarily any aspect of the project. It's using those incentives or concessions with the density bonus. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
And then, just, this might be for the project applicant. So is it that, is it the 2.9 million provided as a developer community benefit and the subsidizing of the parking garage that's expected to be the main source of, I guess, financial assistance that provides the ability of the affordable housing to be developed? Or is it that potentially there could be other aspects?
Yeah, I would say for the concessions that, yeah, maintaining the critical footprint of the commercial space to help provide those subsidies is important to the overall development application, inclusive of subsidizing the self-help for the elderly space too, which was part of the ENA agreement with the city.
Okay, thank you. And then, just a quick explanation. Can we get an explanation of the ownership structure of the housing site versus the commercial site? So there's multiple properties on this. Are the, are the non-city-owned properties being consolidated and then owned? Is it a lease?
I can handle this one.
Okay.
Okay, so some of this is TBD. So what we're working through right now with our partners at Alta Housing is setting up the ownership structure so that we can best capture state and federal financing sources. And so that's part of our next step of analysis that we're working on. The end destination is likely that the common infrastructure, like the garage, the exiting that's needed, you know, back-of-house services that may be shared, those could be commonly owned by likely the two building owners that are the residential, you know, that's owned by the non-for-profit organization that owns that and the commercial piece. And then likely the actual vertical pieces will be owned by, you know, the commercial piece and then the non-for-profit organization that owns the residential. And then what we have that's a little bit complicated to answer your question is we have two underlying ground leases and a lot-tie agreement that function effectively as a lot merger. But when you use that mechanism, in lieu of a lot merger, when you have multiple ground leases. And one of the things that was really critical to the city council was retaining the ownership of the land. And so we were able to accommodate that ground lease through that mechanism.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think all of my questions have been asked beyond that. So thank you so much.
Okay, great. Commissioner Wiggins, do you have any comment or questions?
Yes, through the chair. An excellent question asking takes care of just about everything. I was going to ask, two for staff, one for the applicant. Just, I'll start with staff. Four, just for clarity, could you state or restate probably the reasons that this will be going back to council? Like, I think there's two or three triggers that would bring, will bring this back to council after it comes back to planning commission for a recommendation, then on to council, I just want to be clear on those triggers.
Yes, there is a requirement in the zoning code that when the height exceeds 55 feet, those projects have to go to city council through a recommendation from the planning commission.
And then additionally, because they're city-owned property, there'll be a disposition and development agreement that goes forward to city council that'll provide the terms, include the ground lease as part of that. So that'll, that'll be a key component. And that'll be sort of the council decision whether to contribute our land to the deal will be formalized through that action.
Thank you very much. Let's see, one more. Looking ahead to us making findings when this comes back, you had touched on the design standards and guidelines that apply. Just wanted to get a bit of clarity. I think there's general design standards and guidelines or just guidelines that are in the downtown area plan. But I think there's specific historic and architectural design policies as well. Could you get a little clarity in that?
Yes, the city has downtown design guidelines that are focused on the historic core, but also the downtown retail core. So this particular site is not located within the historic core. I believe it's one block south of that. However, it is in the downtown retail core, which has broad, general design guidelines relating to height of adjacent structures, building fronts and traditional widths, compatibility of diverse building styles, architectural character and depth in facades, entrances. So there are a number of factors and criteria that are listed for the downtown retail core that do apply to this project.
Thank you. And one for the applicant, actually about the building design. Staff had pointed out a, an open-to-below area or open-to-basement garage area from the affordable building's outdoor terrace. There was an open-to-below area.
Yep, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Is that a light well or is that a garage exhaust vent or?
Most notably, it's for creating light to backlight. You know, that, it's a full city block, so we're trying to bring as much natural light into all aspects of the project. So it's mostly functioning as backlighting some of the ground floor space. And also, one of the things we're trying to do in that separation between the residential and the commercial is create as much of a buffer zone. So we're keeping the exclusive residential amenity area as private and intimate as possible and creating good separation so that the units on the residential are getting as much natural light as they possibly can.
Thank you. Through the chair, those are all my questions.
All right.
Through the chair, could I ask one more question, please? Thank you for the questions and the answers, very helpful. So currently, this is a joint partnership or a proposed joint partnership, private and public. And if I understand correctly, it's 1.16 acres and of land, which the housing component has been transferred to the .37 acres for the city property, correct? Thus getting you to the 50-some-odd base.
That is correct.
Okay, so if this does not get approved by a city council or the city doesn't accept this, would you then have .37 acres of city-owned land, which you could only build 20 units on?
That is a possibility. However, there's also the unlimited density bonus that is allowed under AB 1763.
I did the math, I think it gets you to 33. But this has to work to get that density in that lot for the housing.
I cannot say for sure, I have not done the math around that. Kathy, do you?
So I will say, I'm not sure if this exactly answers your question, but when we were analyzing the development proposals, the two other proposals we were looking at were solely for the development of the city-owned site and had a fairly similar unit count.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. I have a couple of questions, but I think, like you said, other things have been asked and answered. One thing I couldn't find, at least not tonight anyway, was what are the open space requirements for the project? And no one's in there, and I'm not finding it.
If you would give me one moment. They are in the data table that breaks down the development standard.
Yeah, I didn't really see it there. I thought it was there, but. Could we, I wonder if we should bring that up?
So the open space requirement for non-residential is 1% of the fore area. And it includes requirements for minimum widths along sidewalks, et cetera. And then has shading requirements as well.
Okay, thank you. Maybe I wasn't scrolling far enough or something.
And through the chair, if I could add, so for the residential overlay, there are also open space requirements that are at least 80 square feet per unit. And then again, has some minimum standards for dimensions.
All right, thank you. And then the other item I wanted some clarification on was, please remind me of the name of the community. Is it Self-Help for the Elderly? Okay, so I wanted some clarification on the issue of whether or not it's in a, it's on a side of the building that requires retail transparency.
That is correct, it's on the required retail frontage. However, the, there is a special use permit that could be granted that allows users that are active users, similar to retail, but are not quite retail and commercial in nature. So there is that flexibility built into the code.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. So with programming, that occupant of that space could be, could design the storefront spaces as act- spaces as active spaces as opposed to closing that, those windows off?
That is correct. Yeah, that can be factored into the design.
Okay, all right, thank you. I think, I think that answers my questions. Okay, if there's not any other questions from the planning commissioners, then we can move on to the public comment portion of the evening. So at this time, I would like to see how many public comment, how many public speakers we have, what we're anticipating either via Zoom or in person. I think Mary will be able to tell us if you've signed in to be a speaker.
So at this point, I have three in-person public speakers and two, four, maybe four? And two via Zoom. Five.
Okay, so five and three, so we have about eight. Okay. Okay, all right. So then why don't we go ahead and open it up and let's stick to no more than three minutes per person.
Okay, so our order will be in-person and then via Zoom.
All right, that sounds fine with me. Let's have our first speaker.
So our first speaker is Michael Liu. Michael, you can step up to the podium.
Hi, good evening. I'm Michael Liu. I'm a carpenter here in San Mateo County and I'd just like to express my support for Harvest Properties because they've committed to using a responsible union general contractor. And union contractors pay prevailing wage as well as provide health insurance and hire apprentices to train our future workforce. I also support affordable housing and their project will have six, 60 units of 100% affordable housing that they described. And that will be family-friendly and suitable for both multi-generational and workforce house, workforce housing. The project will also have great amenities such as outdoor areas, a residential lobby, youth room, laundry, children's play area, and a landscaped seating area. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for your comments.
Our next speaker is Mitch Vinciguera. You can step to the podium.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Mitchell Vinciguera. I'm a field representative for the carpenters local 217 here in San Mateo County. We support Harvest Properties as they've committed to using a responsible union general contractor. Having a union contractor ensures those employees will be given prevailing wage, health insurance, and apprenticeship opportunities. I think it's also really awesome, this project's going to be dedicating ground floor space to self-help for the elderly. It's a prominent local nonprofit organization and this is going to be a permanent location for them. So that's gonna be great. Self-help for the elderly has provided assistance and support to seniors in San Mateo since 1992. I know one of the topics being considered, or it was on the agenda to be considered tonight, is the materials. Mass timber is natural and beautiful building material that's highly sustainable, regenerative. It significantly reduces carbon emissions and provides architectural and visual diversity to adjacent redevelopment areas. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Our next speaker is Brian Shields.
Thank you. Good evening, good commissioners. My name's Brian Shields. I'm a field representative for carpenters local 217. Tonight, I'm speaking in favor of Harvest Properties and their commitment with, to the community of San Mateo. This developer is building 100% affordable housing and that will be 60 units and with the dedicated space to the elderly they're purchasing into the community. This is not to mention the fact that they have made a commitment to the workforce here. Harvest Properties is committed to using a union general contractor, which will provide healthcare, apprenticeship, and prevailing wage for the workforce here. We all know how important it is to cultivate the workforce of San Mateo City and County. What better way than to, what better way than to have projects such as this one built in our city? Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Our next speaker is Lori Watnuki.
Good evening. My name is Lori Watnuki, Chair Williams and members of the Planning Commission. Keith Weber presented two great letters with great illustrations of different architectural styles that can be incorporated next to historic districts. And we would like to suggest a Spanish Revival design like the 101 Ellsworth Building across from the fire station. The building is set back on B Street and works well with the surrounding historic buildings. Any of these options in Mr. Weber's letter would work well. The current office design has gloss on all four sides with illumination at night, making it more difficult for the surrounding residential buildings. Currently, I don't think it will blend in with our other historic buildings. The other residential building being proposed is flat, dark, and needs to be more attractive. We would like to see a new building design with arches, recessed windows framed in, decorative tile, a lighter color versus dark gray, and a design with setbacks in articulation. Another question is the 11,600 square feet facility. How many more seniors will be coming to this facility to have meals, events, or to attend classes? How many will the dining facility hold? Where do all the staff people that are involved with these different offices, such as the kitchen, the maintenance, leasing office, youth services, the high cap, self-help for the elderly, where do these people park and has this been calculated into the 128 parking spaces? I do feel that 37 parking spaces is inadequate for the 60 units. The residents of the Wendy Hill Building have been looking for parking in the central neighborhood. The office parking spaces have overtaken the residential parking spaces and probably other people will be covering the office parking spaces as well and the housing imbalance that more office projects bring to San Mateo. Access driveway. We are requesting that you do not put the access driveway on Fifth Avenue. We have other major projects with the Kikku Crossing Garage, you're going to have 700 cars, the Drager's Mixed Use Project on Fifth Avenue, the new Central Park Garage, same access on Fifth, and the Essex Project if they do not take the exit to El Camino Real. Will the building have a venting system? We'd like to see some restaurants on the first floor. Will this new building accommodate that? And maybe this was covered in terms of open spaces, but we need to have a large play area for the children and a quiet area for others during COVID for adults.
I'll ask you, your time is up. I'll have to ask you to wrap it up.
We would like to see a traffic study and a shade and shadow study.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Diane Whitaker.
Good evening, Chair Williams and Commissioners. Diane Whitaker, North Central Neighborhood. I'm going to jump all over the place. I have concerns with the fact that there's no onsite loading zone. The driveway and garage access, its location, where the trash and recycling is located on Fourth, and the usability of the at-grade open space for the public. Also, according to the staff report, the sidewalks do not meet the pedestrian master With the requested waivers, I'm concerned that the affordable housing building is being used to allow waivers that the commercial and retail building can take advantage of, such as the street wall requirement and the bulk standard. Most of you should be familiar with the Peninsula Station project on El Camino that was constructed by Midpin Housing. It's up against the railroad tracks and once the grade separation, the railroad grade separations were completed, we heard a lot of complaints from the residents about how there was an increase in train noise that they weren't, weren't used to and weren't expecting. Now going to the design of the buildings, and I know this is one of the topics you're discussing tonight. In real simple terms, the residential building is just too plain and too boxy and too simple and not very attractive. And then you have it contrasted with the commercial and office building that is, it's just all over the place. There's too many different shapes and forms, there's too much glass, it's, it's just, the contrast between the two is too great and it would be great if somehow the design of each could move more towards a center position where they relate better to each other. So from the staff report, they characterize the residential building as modern and utilitarian, has a rectangular form, lack of adornment, large, adornment, large windows, and little articulation to know on the facade. And the building number two, contemporary with a large amount of glass. And I look forward to the three items that staff has outlined for your input tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Who's our next speaker?
Our next speaker is via Zoom, Steve. You can go ahead and unmute yourself, Steve Siriani, and speak.
Hi, Steve, can you hear us?
Yep, there it goes. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can go right ahead.
Great, well, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Unfortunately, the applicant wasn't able to go through all of his slides on design. But what I did see, I really like, I've spoken on a couple of these recently where I do like the modern design. I like a lot of windows. I like kind of what's happening in Mountain View and Redwood City, how they incorporate some new design with some of the old design or at least aspects of the design. There are some historical buildings in San Mateo that just happen to be old. They don't happen to be very good-looking and I really appreciate when there's a plan to, in San Mateo, to bring some of these more modern buildings. I own, I've lived in Fox City for 28 years and I have a business. I'm out of the offices at 100 South Ellsworth for the last five years and I look at that 101 Ellsworth Building and I would much rather look at the design that I saw today. So, you know, as a business owner, I think it's great to have more affordable residents. We do, you know, a lot of our employees are in the $19 to $25 range. We're finding it increasingly difficult to find anyone that could live close to this San Mateo Peninsula area because it's just too hard to find housing. So I really appreciate that part. I love the, the one slide I did see, the, the natural wood lit up on the ceilings from the street, I think would be fantastic. I really like that aspect of the design. I wish I could see more of it, but I know the applicant ran out of time. This is going to be weird, at least for myself, to say, but I actually appreciate the foresight of the state to come up with these benefit incentives for builders when they build affordable housing units and self-help type things. So I'm really glad Harvest is utilizing these benefits to improve our city for those needs. I think it's, especially on the elder side, well, both housing and elderly, I think it's sorely needed and I really appreciate their commitment to improving our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. All right, who do we have next?
Our next speaker is Debbie Soon. Debbie, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, Debbie, can you hear us?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Oh, terrific. Yeah, my name is Debbie Soon. I am, my family is a 50-plus year resident of San Mateo and hopefully 50 more. I'm second generation here. My daughter hopefully will be third. In full disclosure, I am a member of the Advisory Board for Self-Help for the Elderly. I am also a member of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force that Kathy heads along with Commissioner Nugent. I just want to say, it sounds as if perhaps you don't know a whole lot about self-help for the elderly. We were just recently commended and recognized by the city council for 30 years, being an integral part of providing key services to not only needy seniors, but seniors in general for food insecurity, to ensure that they have social well-being and emotional fitness. I think on the diversity and inclusion front, there's something that hasn't been said explicitly, so let me take a moment to do that. DEI is not just about race and gender. It is about perspective and view. And I think that the City Planning Commission and Harvest and Alta all need to be commended for the out-of-the-box thinking to embrace, I think, a kind of diversity that the city has embarked on in its general plan and espouses through its values. I think that San Mateo can be a model city where people not only live, but where they can work and grow in a sustainable and inclusive way. So thank you very much from someone who is a long-term resident of the city. My heart is here. My family cares tremendously about how and where the city is headed. And I think that this project with self-help as one of the anchor tenants takes it a huge step in the right direction. So thank you so much.
All right, thanks so much for your comments. So who's our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Drew. Drew, you can unmute yourself.
Good evening, commissioners, staff, and fellow residents and guests. So a lot of things I agree with on public comments that have been said and some other things earlier. So I want to focus mainly on Railroad Avenue. I just think that's getting a little bit short. Could you use some attention? Let me put it that way. So like the sidewalk only being six foot, I think the sidewalk needs to be wider if you're coming in and out of the parking garage, a six-foot sidewalk for sight distance. Also, the whole thing with the grade step, which was noted in the staff presentation, I think is very valid. Grade separation through that area, there's a concept called shoe fly tracks and they need to go somewhere. You know, almost any scenario, tunnel, I've heard tunnel trench, bridges and stuff, you know, there needs to be space to grade step through downtown. Ideally, we'd even set the building back a little bit from Railroad Avenue to give some more space for this, but I think that contradicts with a zoning thing that the building has to be built on the lot line. So it's just, it's going to cost a lot more money to do grade step. So I think on Railroad Avenue, it's, we do need to account, we should account for grade step. I think most likely the tracks will go up. That's by no means been decided, but if you look at cost and look at cost and how it's worked in other cities, which means the second, third, and fourth stories need to have, and it's cheaper, much cheaper to do now, like the noise protection and just how those are designed to accommodate something like that. And I think that can be done. There's some reasonable assumptions that can be made that don't add significant cost to that. You know, a thing to do, to widen the sidewalk, maybe the first floor is stepped back, and then there's an overhang. There's pros and cons with that, I'm sure from an architect or a design standpoint, but to widen out that sidewalk, I've been in overseas countries and they do that a lot, well, in some overseas countries. So, yeah. And the whole access point on Railroad Avenue for the garage, that's another one, which when grade sep happens, I just, I mean, if the garage, the compromise will be, no one has to get in and out of the garage there for like two or three years, which sounds crazy, but, I mean, I just don't see how you provide great access when there's train tracks immediately outside of it. You can't have people driving on train tracks, and you're gonna have electrified train tracks. So I don't have a good answer where that garage entrance maybe goes. It's just, I don't know. I'm sure there's a solution, it's just a number of trade-offs there. So I would, plus one with the building could be a little, just look better, but I'm sure over time that will happen. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks for your comments.
Our next speaker is Lori. Lori, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, Lori. Can you go ahead?
Yes, hi, thank you. I'm sorry we don't have time to talk about the positive aspects of the project with your Benny. But I echo a lot of Drew's comments in terms of, I'm really concerned about the grade separation and the access point with the at-grade situation with the frame right now, and then the construction process, and how that will work. So I think there needs to be more time and energy spent on how to do that. You know, we've had a lot of these projects go downtown with these whole blocks. It would be helpful to see how many whole block projects there are down there and do a cumulative analysis. I was wondering how many people per square feet are calculated for the office space. I understand that it can be anywhere from 100 to 200. I used 175, and that means 760 people in the office buildings with only 138 parking places. And .7 for the residential is also very low. I'm concerned about the trash pickup on Fourth Avenue, given the railroad and the crossings. Excuse me. This is a downtown retail floor, and I see very little retail. I realize it's early in this, but it seems like the senior self-help is great, but it's not a retail use. I hope something can be done about the design aspects. It does not look like there was a lot of attention paid to what San Mateo looks like, what characterizes San Mateo. We do have a downtown historic district. I agree that the residential building is plain, modern, utilitarian, and we can do better in San Mateo than that. Again, the large expanses of glass and the timbers, they just don't really relate. So I would ask that you relook at the design aspect, consider the access. I agree that six feet of sidewalk on railroad is kind of scary, and is there really enough room for all of this project in this area? So, thank you for your time. I look forward to seeing the next round, and I really do hope that the applicant can take into account my letter and Keith's letters as to what we're looking for in design. It's not that hard to make a nice-looking building. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. And Mary, do we have any other speakers?
There are no other speakers.
Okay. Okay, so if there's no other speakers, just give it a minute there, then we can go ahead and open it up to the Planning Commission for Deliberation. So, there are some specific asks of staff, or some specific items for us to consider. So it would be helpful maybe if that could be put up on screen. I have it up on my screen as page eight of the packet, or page eight of the PDF. Anyway, maybe we probably all have it up, but, so at this point, I was gonna see if anyone would like to start with comments.
Chair?
Yes?
I might, I might go first.
Okay, great.
And I think there's, there's a couple categories. I'm gonna get to the building design and site plan, and some things here and there, but I wanted to acknowledge a couple of things, just on a practical level. I've visited the site, I've spoken to the developer, and I'm professionally acquainted with members of the broader team, but that's not gonna impact my ability to be impartial in this case. But at a broad level, there's, I think there's a background to this project. There's a direction that's been set up in, based on the public land, what council asked for, and we heard, we heard in clarifying questions, some of the particulars that council asked for. I was reading through some of those documents, you know, for the residential, they had asked for seven floors, they had asked for emphasis on family housing, and I'm just picking out those two, but there's a number of things that were set up, and I think the overall land use, it started down a road from that time with the number of affordable units and the amount of square footage of office. And that leads to, you know, a jobs-housing balance discussion that, you know, I think on site, that's not a balance of jobs and housing, and so that's an observation I'll make, and I, but to the extent that I have read through this, looked up the history of it, there's some things that were set up by the way council asked staff to proceed, and what they asked applicants to do, applicants, the multiple developers looking to develop this. And so I think that's something for us to be aware of, both on this project and going forward, about how you set that up when there's a project like this. It's a little bit atypical. So I won't say too much on that, other than I'd like to see a better jobs-housing balance on this project. But there's a direction that council has set us up in, and so I'm aware of that, and I'm also aware of a jobs-housing imbalance in San Mateo. So I'm gonna leave that one there. It's, it's really, this is a really fascinating site. This is a really interesting opportunity. It's, to me, exciting to reinvigorate this block. I know, I know about its history. People that have lived here longer than me know more, but I've taken my kids to Talbot's, and I've taken my kids to Tomatina as well, for that matter, but there's, it's good to see, to me, to see more retail, to see retail retained here, to see housing brought to the site. I don't mind seeing more jobs downtown. I think it's an interesting opportunity, and it's an interesting site that's not in the historic district, but it's near it. Public comment about recent projects is certainly, you know, of interest and relevant in looking at the way downtown is changing. And so it caused me to think a lot about the history of downtown and its development pattern. And recently, I had the, I had the opportunity to go to the County History Museum and read some of the archived documents on downtown's history. So there's a early real estate developer named DA Raybold that did a lot of the development downtown and spurred a lot of growth. And the transition of downtown way, way back in time, more than 100 years ago, downtown was actually estates. There's a couple of streets, and there was large private estates. It wasn't just the Cool Mansion, there was other ones. And the development of Third from B Street up to El Camino really is a story of transition at that time, from estates into, into retail, into the buildings that a lot of people know and love and reference. And as I read that, and as I was reading the downtown survey, what stands out to me architecturally, just to try to explain what I'm talking about here, is, it's an eclectic history. It's diverse in its architectural styles, and, and I think it's a story of growth and change. And so I, when I look at this site and I think about what's appropriate here, to me, I'm thinking about reflecting a history that is about growth and change, and it's about, I would say, diversity in architecture. It's not like we have 14 blocks of Spanish colonial architecture next to us. We have a real diversity. We have concrete, you know, poured-in-place concrete buildings like the Ben Franklin Hotel. We have buildings with really amazing terracotta like at B and First, and so there's a mixture. And I think if you're gonna draw on downtown, you have a lot of options. There's no one way, in my mind, to draw on downtown. And the other thing that struck to me, and it's probably obvious to plenty of people, is the scale of development has changed. DA Raybold was building one, two, three, four storefronts at a time, and that's just not the prevailing pattern of development anymore. We do full blocks, and to me, one of the highest-level comments on, on the building design is about breaking down the massing. And so I'm gonna, that's, that's sort of the, to me, that's the biggest comment. And so when I look at what they've done to date, I think it's incomplete, but my initial reaction is that it's on the right track. And what do I mean by that? There is a hint of architectural investigation going on that suggests that they're trying to set up a conceit or a narrative of multiple buildings, smaller buildings, smaller masses aggregating onto a block, which is what you saw historically in downtown. I think it's incomplete. I think the residential building is at least looking distinct as a building. I think what's happening on the office needs to go further. The corner of B and Fourth has, is sort of in conflict with itself in a couple ways right now. I think in terms of breaking down the massing, it should be more articulated from the office to the south, going along B. I think maybe that one of the challenges or things that people haven't liked about recent projects that they've seen, that are full-block projects, is that they're neither here nor there in terms of it being smaller compositions when a larger block, or it's one big mass. And so I think when I look at this roof line, this continuous roof line that's turning the corner from Fourth to B, B then around to Fifth, to me, that's undercutting an approach that breaks up the masses. So I think you need vertical articulation as the corner mass moves to the brick on South B, if that makes sense. I think there needs to be, both in the vertical mass, but certainly at the roof line. The roof line is just, it's just continuous, it's drawn on there, and so it's, to me, it's undercutting that approach. I also think that on that corner, you tend to, you know, put sort of massive elements, you put anchors on corners, you celebrate and acknowledge the architectural corner, usually with mass. You can do it with void. I think the problem here is you have mass and void. You have, and let's just assume for a second that we can understand glass as a solid, even though it's had various levels of transparency. You have solid at the ground, and then you have this recess of the terraces on levels three, four, and five, and then you have that roof line again. So I think that needs to read either as a void or as a mass, but not both. I think that's confusing the I, and I think the I, my I, further confused by that continuous roof line at the top. So I think it needs work there. And I'm just gonna keep, instead of going by my notes, I'm just gonna keep going with what I'm looking at here. As you, as you turn to the south on B and on to Fifth, that's a lot of glass. That's, that's probably, I think, that's factually true, that's a lot of glass. I like a lot of glass. I like the idea of telling a story that's about looking to the past and also looking to the future. And maybe that's just my opinion of, of what's great about San Mateo, but it goes right to what I think of as my home and what I think of as San Mateo's identity, which I think is celebrating the past and looking to the future. And so if there's, there's a narrative here about traditional materials and modern materials, I think there's a place for both. But there's no shortage of comments about the amount of glass, and so something for the developer to, and the applicant to consider is, do I have the right balance? And when you look at a building like 101 South Ellsworth, which is mentioned, I mean, I'm not a fan of that, of that building. It's a massive building with limited articulation. The windows are small, so if you're, if you're talking about, you know, looking for more traditional architecture or recollection of looking to the past, maybe, maybe it's just about there's too much glass and not enough solidity in there. So that's something you could do, I think, and would hopefully go some distance towards, you know, acknowledging some of the comment is, is a different balance of glass. I'm, I'm drawn to it, especially if it's butt-jointed, and, you know, I don't think a bunch of heavy, clunky mullions looks that exciting, but a really sheer wall of glass that's revealing masked timber, I think can be done really elegantly. Maybe you can just do that at the corner of Fourth and B, and you've got it, and you've told that part of the story, and you've got the affordable building, which is clad in brick, telling a part of the story, and then you've got the lowered mass along B, the brick mass there, breaking it down as well. And so when you turn to the south, on to Fifth, South and B and on to Fifth, maybe that's just the wrong balance of materiality. I think it could be done well either way, but I think, not surprisingly, this is a study session, it's in, it's in progress, it's not balanced right today, but I'm trying to give some suggestions about how it could get into balance. In terms of detail, I would agree that these buildings, as they get developed, would greatly benefit from articulation at the pedestrian level to pedestrian scale. There's a little bit on the affordable building, you've at least got these sort of, the white brick transitions into a black material at the ground level, like a wainscoting, and you've got lights there. There's not much, I think there could be more, although I wanna acknowledge the, the cost of building affordable housing, and just simultaneously aware that as you gussy up that facade with elements to make it more special, you're, you're raising the cost of each unit, and it's just a balance that, that has to be struck. That is maybe enough on the broader building design. I would, a couple particular items. Staff has asked about distinction from recent projects. I think maybe there's good distinct and bad distinct. To me, this is distinct from recent projects. There are things that are similar, like the glass, but there's also the introduction of, of masked timber, which I think we should, I, I wanna be supportive of. I think the way they're starting to break down the building into multiple smaller buildings, it looks to me like it's on a track to be more successful than it's been in other buildings. So I think that makes it distinct. I think having 100% affordable housing makes it distinct. I think there's a number of things that make it distinct. So I don't view it as being too much alike, but I certainly understand concerns that have been raised, and I think I've talked about those. Okay, odds and ends. The rooftop terraces, sorry, these aren't odds and ends, these are important, but the question, the roof terrace and the sound, is it too noisy from the tracks? It's, it's a number of things that are going to happen, or could happen. If grade separation happens, you're not gonna have as much noise from horns. If electrification happens, you're not gonna have as much noise from diesel engines. At the same time, if, if the trains get raised, you're gonna have more, just more direct noise going up onto that second-floor terrace. So I don't actually know how you analyze that, per se, but it feels like a technical question, and it feels like it has a mitigation to it, potential mitigation, but I, I don't know that I can sit here today and say yes or no, it will or it won't work. The driveway location, to me, makes, it's ideal to have it on, on railroad, just because you minimize pedestrian conflict with cars. Any of the other streets are, should have more pedestrians on them. Any of the other streets are, should have more pedestrians on them. I think that makes sense. Also, would be impacted by grade separation. I don't think that means we can't do things on railroad, but it's just a consideration. And a couple things on street scape success. I'm really happy to see retail here. I know that's sort of, you know, contemplated in downtown plans. But to me, activation of the ground plane, making it successful for people walking around there and enjoying it, is not just about glass. It's more about what happens inside the building and their opportunity to participate in it. So I think that's important. But I think it's really challenging to get successful retail. And so just in terms of the articulation, the facade, the storefront finishes, I hope it feels really diverse and, let's say, eclectic, like a lot of the rest of our downtown does. I think there's plenty of retail where the common architectural design of the building is overwhelming. And the tenants get a little postage stamp to put their logo on, and everything else is the same, and it feels sterile. So I would hope that we can almost flip that on its head or encourage that. I think another thing that's important for the success of the street scape is the width of the sidewalks. So I'd like to see those get more, if not totally compliant, a lot closer to being compliant. Ten feet feels really narrow. I know that's on Fourth and Fifth, but those are still streets that I've walked down and even today felt like it's kind of narrow. And then the Fourth and B Plaza, I think is a great idea in that location. I think what I saw for a second, the renderings feels not so welcoming. So I think it, maybe instead of presenting an angled planter wall, battered planter wall, maybe it's more about seating that's welcoming folks to come in there. But otherwise, I think that's the right move there. And those are all of my comments. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your comments. Who would like to go next? Would you like to go next, Commissioner Nugent?
Sure, I'll just go this way, yeah. Through the chair. Thank you, Commissioner Wiggins. I had a question for you. When you mention articulation, do you mean more of a fine detail articulation? Or do you mean massing articulation?
Thank you, Commissioner Nugent. Two scales. When you look at the mass of, the overall mass of the block, and in my mind, trying to break it down into pieces that more closely relate to the historical scale of buildings, that is a massing of, that is an articulation of mass. So big facades, forty, fifty, a hundred-foot sections of facade need to have breaks, recesses in them. Let's say between two masses together, a recess in the middle breaks up and articulates that as from one mass into two. There's another granularity of it where I think that the building would benefit, especially in, let's call it, the first forty feet from the ground, the first floor, second floor, from articulation of the facade into elements that scale better to the human body. And so that would be, if I was, you know, just totally enamored of terracotta, which I personally am, you could introduce terracotta, freezes, insets, reliefs along a facade at ground level, framed by brick, for example, instead of just brick. So two scales.
Thank you. Yeah, that's helpful. I'm glad you articulated a little bit more what you were talking about. I am gonna actually go from a higher level down to greater detail. So I kind of want to start out with other concerns. And before I talk about concerns, I do want to note some of the things that I am very happy about. I'm very pleased with the self-help for the elderly being incorporated into the residential building. I'm very excited for the affordable housing development there. I think it's extremely needed, and I'm glad that this is going forward. It's something that is getting developed. I think the big thing that is floating over my head is the jobs-housing imbalance in the building of so much commercial space compared to the amount of building of residential. And I want to say, building of commercial space in a well-functioning, well-planned city and region is a good thing. We should be building, we should be growing jobs. We should be allowing people to better themselves through getting nice jobs, being able to compete for, getting good jobs. Businesses should grow. It's what helps people move up and get better lives. Unfortunately, and it's not the fault of the people in this room or the people that are involved in the city government, we've found ourselves in a situation where we've just become outrageously distorted as far as the number of jobs that are getting created and the number of houses that are able to be built. And we should have been able to build a lot more houses than we have in many decades, over the many decades. And that's the unfortunate situation where we find ourselves. It is a good thing to have jobs in a downtown along with residential. It is a good thing to have jobs right next to, right next to public transit. Like, that is what a good, functioning city should do. And having such mix is a good thing. It's just that, it's unfortunate that we have such, in this one project, such a disproportionate number of, or size of square footage for commercial versus the number of units that are being built. And it's not my expectation that any one project solves everything or makes, gets the perfect ratio of jobs to housing. But it's also concerning to me that we build something like this, and it feels like one step forward, two steps back, unfortunately. Because again, building commercial, building places where people work should not be a bad thing. But it is, unfortunately, because of the other aspects of our planning system. And it's, it really, it really makes me frustrated because I don't know what to do about this particular situation. Because as a separate, as an isolated project, it's actually a good project. I have comments about the architecture, for sure. But, you know, if this, the context of our regional housing shortage is separated, you know, this is great. We've got affordable housing where it needs to be, jobs where it needs to be, retail where it needs to be, all that sort of stuff. So I just don't know. I wish that, or I would like to see, from a higher level, this project work where there was less commercial and some additional, just regular market-rate housing that was part of the non-city-owned property. And finding a way to make that work, to get the affordable housing built, and at least make this less of an imbalance in that situation. I would love for the project applicant to be able to do that. And there is space on these lots to do that. And it's obviously, it obviously works. It's been done in other new developments nearby. And so, I don't know. The subsidy that is provided to the affordable housing development is greatly needed. But again, it feels like, oh, we get the subsidy. If we had the ability to quickly and easily make, build the consummate amount of market-rate housing nearby, then yeah, that makes total sense. Have your commercial subsidize affordable housing, it's needed. And then we would have a great system as a city. But we don't. We don't have that in place right now. And I know that Harvest is building some new residential buildings that are replacing commercial, which softens this issue. But it still is a problem with, it still is a problem overall that we have a lot of commercial space going in right here without the ability to offset it with the housing. That being said, you know, I don't, just the way this project is set up, it's probably not going to be decided by the Planning Commission. It's ultimately going to be approved by the City Council. And we don't know what the City Council composition is going to be in the future. And so it's important that the project applicant understands what the needs are going to be and what the goals are of a future City Council as well when spending a lot of money to develop these plans and procure the property. So I'm just saying, it's a complicated project for me at a larger scale. So that being said, I also want to mention that the BLA is great, and I'm glad that was a criteria. PL, I'm sorry, PLA was great, and I'm glad it was a part of the criteria in choosing this developer. The, so I'm going to go into building comments first, and then I'm going to go into some site, site comments. So the first thing I want to note is that I think that the residential portion of this is close enough that it could be, it could be altered and, you know, tweaked to the point where it would be a very nice project. It would have a very appropriate urban context. There's lots of apartment buildings from the turn of the 20th century that have a similar massing and style. And so I think that that can be done. I'm going to talk first about the residential portion, looking at the architecture. I actually appreciate the breakup of the color on the ends to make the mass feel a little bit smaller. I also like the, you know, the nod to, you know, pre-war architecture with the cornice and such. I feel that, just more broadly, the lower two levels tend to recede with the black in the windows, especially in the elevations. It may be a little bit better in person as you're on the street level. But it feels weak at the base because the mass is, feels larger on top, and it almost has kind of a dingbat sort of floatiness to it, the way it is. And I do like the contrast that is available. But I would recommend having some, a little bit more substance in the color down below at the lower two levels. The next thing I want to talk about is just a quick detail thing. There is a, there's basically two colors to the facade of the main building. There's what I'm going to call gray and light gray. And so there's light gray bands between the windows vertically. And there's a single gray band that goes between the Fourth and the Fifth floor that is in contrast to that light gray band. I think that that should be flipped to go to the, between the Fifth and the Sixth floor because it feels, again, wrong from a traditional building design where you're going to actually, when you go up in a building, you tend to have smaller massings and smaller windows, or they're the same, same, as you get further away. So it kind of scales back as you get there. And what that design right now is doing is it's making the top feel top-heavy. The next thing I want to note is I think the windows and the mullions and just the type of windows should be different between what I'm calling the black portion and the lighter gray portion of the buildings. I think I would be fine keeping the window designs as they are on the black portion. But I think that the larger part, the mass of the gray, would be much better if we went to something a little bit more simple, like two sash windows or like three panes, somewhat more similar to what's going on on the second level. I do not like the staccato staggering of the mullions of those windows. I just, I think it's a gimmick that's going to go out of style soon. And it doesn't, the building doesn't know if it's, you know, is it traditional, is it not? And I think that that's not enough to really put it over the edge one way or the other. And so I think keep that window style on the black portions, which to me is fine. But the overall other one should be a little bit more traditional, in the same vein as what's on the lower two floors, just in terms of the way the lights are broken up. Okay, so that's, those are my comments on the residential building. Now I'm going to go to the commercial portion. And so my overall takeaway from the commercial portion is that the glass and timber portion feels like an out-of-scale Apple Store. And I want to kind of use that as an example. So the Apple Stores that are, you know, very stark and contrasty with, you know, surrounding, you know, retail areas work only because they're basically one store among many, and they're of a scale that doesn't overdominate an entire block. And so the contrast is cool, and it's like, whoa, that's something different. And it makes Apple feel special, which, you know, they get to steal that, the ability to do that. Because if every other store was to do that, it would start to look very monotonous quickly. Also, when you have a big, massive building like this, that is all glass, it works much better when you're in some sort of very green bucolic environment where your eye view is taking up at like sixty percent at least, mostly green trees and stuff. And then it's just positioned as a contrast beacon. And your body, your brain is okay with it because that starkness is balanced by a very soft, natural, green landscape. And so, you know, that's, you know, to take another example, the Apple spaceship does that. And it's okay. It works because it's surrounded in a, in a non-urban context. If you wanted to do a glass corner, like say, one of these corners, I think that that would be acceptable, just as a contrast. But that, to me, is it. It's way too much. It's, the building I could see being broken up into at least two other, two other building types or two other style types to, again, break down that mass even more. I think you can, you get the point. You could get the point with maybe two or three columns on each side of that corner. And then the rest of the building could be something else. And I, and I agree that this building would be much better served for our downtown if the building, the majority of it, had a much more traditional look to it. I don't think we need to be so contrasty in this space because a continuous, more consistent cityscape is just better-looking. It's, you don't want to have a cacophony of different styles, especially when the, many of the styles are too, too much in contrast. Now, that's not to say that you need to have one type of traditional style, say, Spanish revival or Tudor. Like, our downtown already has, you know, an eclectic mix. But there is a continuity of general... of general architectural reasonings that traditional architecture has that, you know, non-traditional architecture doesn't have. And so if you have a big mix of that, you're not going to feel similarly continuous. And I tell, I say this because I've studied a lot of different cities in Europe, including a lot of cities in Germany, which were bombed to smithereens, and they had to be rebuilt. And some were rebuilt better than others, and the ones that were rebuilt were a little bit more consistent with the pre-war architecture. And the other ones, and, you know, there's many reasons behind it, often out of poverty, they couldn't match the original buildings. We don't need to bomb our city voluntarily. We need to incorporate some of the existing texture that's there. And I don't think that the massive glass walls are doing that appropriately in this space. It's an urban space. And so I could go into lots of, you know, suggestions for modifying this, but I just, I've thought about this a number of times. And I should mention that I talked to the developers last week for about an hour. I did not provide any of this commentary outside of, you know, just talking about urban design philosophy in general. The material of mass timber is a fantastic thing, and I'm very glad that this project is doing that, but I don't need to see it everywhere. Like, I don't want to, just like if steel was a new building material, when it was new building material, they didn't build just pure steel buildings, and people didn't really like that. They clad them in masonry, and it was better accepted when it was a new material. And I think that it's just way overdone in this whole block of a building. It's okay to reveal it in a smaller context, and I think that it's great to celebrate it. And I also understand that you want to get light for such a deep building for office space, and I want to, I want to find some way to compromise that. I read the letter from Keith, and I really appreciate that he sent that. I would say that those buildings that he sent pictures of probably don't have enough window space to effectively light the interior of these office buildings that are, again, fairly deep. But I do think that some of the more, some of the more turn-of-the-century factory-type buildings with the big windows could effectively get you the light that you need. And so I've done, I did a little bit of searching around to see what could be a little bit more appropriate in the masses, as opposed to just like tell you what you should, you know, I'm not going to design the building for you. I just think that you should take some inspiration from a couple of places that are existing in the Bay Area. And the first one is 1 South Park Street in San Francisco. It's on the corner of South Park Street and Second Street. It's where, if you go on Google or Apple Maps, it's where the American Grilled Cheese Kitchen is located. I don't know if staff can go on Google or Apple Maps during this. Is that something that you can do, or is that to show?
I worked across the street from that.
Yeah, yeah. You know that building?
Years ago, yeah.
Yeah. It's got cool arched windows on the bottom floor, and then it's got, you know, big rectangular windows on the upper floors.
I think the location is adequate.
Yeah, okay. And then the next one is similar. It's just as a slight variation on that, it's 101 Townsend Street. And so I think those two buildings would achieve the light that you need for office development, but be much more fitting for the style of architecture and integration that San Mateo Downtown on B Street, like, we're talking B Street, should have. And I think that residents are going to appreciate that. So those were my comments on the building, and then I'm going to go to site plan comments really quick. I think, I'm worried about the site triangle at the corners along Railroad Avenue. That's a very small sidewalk. And I also do worry a little bit about sight of pedestrians on that sidewalk as cars are entering and exiting the parking garage there. However, I do think that, grade separation aside, Railroad Avenue is probably a preferred place for that access driveway because it's going to have the fewest number of pedestrian conflicts, because there's going to be very few people that are going to be walking along that street compared to the other three streets. I don't know what's going to become of the grade separation and how that is going to impact Railroad Avenue, but it is a concern of mine. I just don't have any input that I can say. So my, not having any knowledge on what will happen with the grade separation to Railroad Avenue, I think functionally, as it stands, the entrance is better on railroad, as you have it planned. I think that, I think that the elimination of the angled parking and putting it into parallel parking to gain sidewalk width is a good trade-off. I'd much rather have larger sidewalks there. And I want to make sure that the proposed plaza is activated with, you know, café seating or something that's going to have a lot of people out there through whatever retail or restaurant use is going to be there. So, yeah, I just worry that it's going to be a dead space, and I don't think it has to be, but it should be designed in such a way that you can actually get decent enough seating so that people can linger there. That's really important. If it's just a pass-through space, it's waste, but it needs to have enough places for somebody to linger there for many minutes or hours. Those are my comments, so thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. We are going to take a five-minute break, if that's okay. We'll be back at 9:25 to start again.
But to what Commissioner Nugent said, the finer-grain detail, the finer-grain articulation is quite high. And these buildings have what I would call more of that pre-war look, and I think that's what people are looking for. And I think sometimes when we hear, "I don't like big, massive buildings," we respond by trying to break up these blocks into multiple small buildings, and then you get something that can feel perhaps disconnected, or it's harder to make it look uniform. And so that's just my preference is to, would be to figure out how to simplify and to figure out how to reduce some of the articulation of the mass. Thinking about other projects in the area, specifically the one that has been proposed directly across the street, the Dragers Project, that building is brick all the way around. And so my first thought in figuring out, thinking about, how could, how could we reduce the articulation of the mass, was to look to that building as inspiration. And just looking at these elevations right now, I feel like these are three different buildings. And I understand the desire to make the residential building feel like a separate building, and I think that's totally fine, but just even the left side of the Railroad Avenue facade looks like a different building than the right side of the East Fifth Avenue facade, which looks like a different building than the B Street facade. And so I'm not an architect. I don't know if I'll have the best ideas of how to create a more uniform look and feel or a more uniform to mass to this building, but my first thought was, can you wrap the brick facade around the entire part of the commercial building? I also feel like the entry to the commercial on B Street is quite prominent. It looks more prominent in elevation than it looks on the floor plan, and so it made me wonder if there was an intention to highlight it. And my reaction is to actually try to do the opposite, to minimize that entrance as a commercial entrance and to try to make it blend in with the rest of the facade. Some other comments about this. I'm a little bit worried about the corner on Fifth and B because there's this great plaza on Fourth and B, and then Fifth and B feels not exactly closed off, but not open, perhaps, to the rest of B Street. And thinking about, because I sit on the General Plan Subcommittee, and I'm very immersed in the General Plan right now, thinking about the next 20 years or the next 40 years, and that this block is currently designated in the General Plan draft as mixed-use high, as is the remainder of B Street from Fifth to Ninth. That entire block is designated as mixed-use high, except for the city-owned parking lot behind Ravioli House. And as that remainder of B Street gets redeveloped, I want to make sure that we're not creating a separation of everything north of Fifth and everything south of Fifth. I want this, in the future, 20 years from now, if the pedestrian mall gets extended down to Fifth Avenue, to it feel like it flows down the rest of B Street. And so that's just something to think about. I thought about, could the entrance be moved around the corner? The entrance to the commercial will be moved around the corner to Fifth Avenue to try to create more retail frontage along B or to make that facade a little bit more uniform, but I think the applicant has some reasons for why that's not the optimal solution. Looking at the terraces on the residential side, my first thought was, and I'm sure this will come as the rest of the design is developed, but what does the direct sunlight versus the shade look like on those terraces? So purely direct sunlight is bad, gets very hot, and then you look for shade, but also if it's entirely in shade, that can get very cold and windy. And so just thinking about, what is the temperature and weather condition going to be of those terraces, and how do we make sure they're comfortable, particularly the one that is designed with the children's playground equipment, making sure it's not too hot or not too cold? I continue to be concerned... I continue to be concerned about the pedestrian and bicyclist situation in this area. And I know that City Council gave some direction that when prioritizing wider sidewalks for ground plane activation versus street parking versus bicycle lanes, that bicycle lanes were the lowest priority. And so we've ended up in a situation where we're going to extend the widths of the sidewalks, and we're going to keep eight parallel parking spots, and we're going to lose a bicycle lane. But we've created a pedestrian mall just two blocks away that is a great destination, and I don't think we want people to drive to that pedestrian mall. And I see right now a lot of people, including my family, biking or walking to that pedestrian mall. And I think what's going to happen is when they come down Fifth Avenue, they're going to get to B Street, and they're going to do what we do now, which is they hop up on the sidewalk, because it is very scary to bike down B Street, especially with a four-year-old and a six-year-old. And so I'm just concerned, when this block is revitalized, when we've got this great sidewalk activation, when we've got cafe tables out there, and we've got servers potentially going back and forth to parklets, having a bunch of bicyclists also trying to navigate that sidewalk, because they feel the street is too unsafe, because they're trying to get to a pedestrian mall where it's, you know, much nicer to walk or slow-bike around. So I think we need to be thinking about, what are the paths to that pedestrian mall? Because the alternatives that have been mentioned, which is to bike straight down Second, or to bike straight down First, or straight down Third, those aren't any less scary. B is less scary than those to bike down with young kids. And so we have to figure out how we're going to get people safely to and from that pedestrian mall. And I'm worried about the multiple mixed uses that I think are going to happen on that very wide, very attractive sidewalk. It's going to be more enticing to bike up on it than it is now. So I think those were all of my comments on design. Oh, one more. I think it makes sense to have the access to the garage on Railroad, but I'm concerned a little bit about potentially a pinch point to cars. If people are commuting by cars, hopefully they won't. This is such a great location for public transit. Hopefully, we won't see that. But I'm a little bit concerned, because right now Railroad is so narrow. And if people are coming from the highway, and it's peak rush hour, and you've got a bunch of commuters, and, you know, they get backed up at the train tracks, that's potentially an unsafe situation if a lot of people are navigating traffic near the train tracks. And so I would just be interested, if there's a traffic study in the future, how we're thinking peak demand would look like in terms of cars getting in and out of Railroad from Fifth Avenue. Okay, I think that was all my design comments. So stepping back and looking at the broader context of this project, I have very similar concerns as Commissioner Nugent. You know, I'm going to say a bunch of stuff that is very familiar to people. Have heard me speak about this topic before, which is that we have a severe housing crisis in San Mateo that was caused by four decades of creating more jobs than the housing we built. And we now have updated data from the last decade. So we know from our construction data from the city and the 2020 census, that between 2010 and 2020, we created 7.6 jobs for every new unit of housing. And I think we can all agree that that is not good, and is contributing to the skyrocketing housing costs, displacement, and increase in vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions. There was some data mentioned about folks living in San Mateo but working outside. Our stats right now are not ideal for a city. So you have about 7,300 people who live and work in San Mateo. We have about 49,000 people who live in San Mateo but work outside. But we also have about 49,000 people who work in San Mateo but live outside. So we're about even, people who work here and live elsewhere, and people who live elsewhere and work here. And the more we continue to create jobs without building the commensurate housing, the more that second number is going to increase. We're going to have more and more people who live outside but commute in, and that's not great. So just looking at some stats, we've got 126,000 square feet of office. I use roughly 200 square feet per employee, because that's what I'm familiar with. So that's about 630 employees and 60 units of housing, for a jobs-to-housing ratio of 10.5 to 1. So per the Building Industry Association, a healthy jobs-to-housing ratio is 1.5 to 1. So we're literally, this project is 10x the healthy ratio. We're going to need 420 units of housing to offset these 630 new jobs, but we're only creating 60. So this project is 360 housing units short. There was a comment made about this project chipping away at the jobs-housing imbalance, and I just don't think that's borne out of the data. This project is going to make the jobs-housing imbalance worse. It's a tough situation, like exactly like Commissioner Nugent said, you know, this, separate from the broader context we're in, this is a fantastic project. We should be creating jobs close to public transit. We should be creating jobs for our community. But we've got four decades of not creating enough housing, and we can't consider those two things in isolation. And specifically, our general plan, Section H 2.2, directs us to consider the overall balance of housing and employment within the community over the term of the plan when evaluating projects at a preliminary stage. So as I want to do, I dig into the data, and I looked at other projects that are currently in our pipeline in downtown: Aaron Brothers, Block 21, One Hayward Avenue, Dragers, 435 East Third Street, Donut Delight, 477 Ninth Avenue, and Block 20. I looked at projects that were within about a mile of downtown, walkable. That's 2,744 jobs. Total housing units, it's a much longer list, so I probably won't recite them all, but the number of housing units is 1,276. So we are already 554 homes short of what we need to maintain a balanced downtown, and this project is going to add 360 additional homes to that shortfall. That's the situation we're in. Those are, those are the numbers. I struggle with the fact that this project has the opportunity, through AB 1763, to do so much more. By providing 100% of the units at the low-income level, this project is eligible for an unlimited percentage of density bonus. And what it's actually building is two more units of housing than is allowed by the base density specified by Measure Y, and 27 units fewer of housing than Measure Y plus the standard density bonus. I don't think that's what AB 1763 intended. Like, I think if we take a step back and we ask, is this project really making use of the density bonus? To walk away with something that's comparable to a standard project at base density, it, you know, I struggle with this. Like Commissioner Nugent said, this project was set up in a certain way. I attended that meeting. I listened to it. I don't recall any discussion of the jobs-to-housing ratio of any of the options. I don't know that City Council was considering it in that way. But as staff mentioned, the, there were two other proposals that were just for the parking lot, and they had a similar number of housing units. And normally, the justification for building the commercial is to offset the cost of the housing, but there were two other proposals on the table that were able to build the same number of housing without the commercial. So I just feel like, to your point, Commissioner Nugent, I would love to see some market rate here. I would love, I would love to see something more that really utilizes AB 1763 and really can justify why the commercial needs to be built, to make those units of housing happen. And then I'll just echo what Commissioner Nugent said, which is, the parameters of this were set up by, by the City Council, although I don't know if they fully understood all those implications, because I don't recall it being discussed that way. But we are going to have a different City Council that ultimately approves this. Four of the five members are going to be different. They might have different priorities. And so I think that's something that should, should be considered as well. Those are all my comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Patel. Go right ahead, Commissioner Ebner.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you to the public and staff and fellow commissioners for all of your very insightful input. I see a lot of good in this project, and I'm glad this is a study session where we get to discuss the positives and some setbacks and the ability to improve on it. And hopefully, the city and the applicants will take some of the input that the commission is able to provide and use it in a positive fashion. The self-help communities space in this project is huge to me. I'm really impressed with that. I think it's a tremendous public benefit. I'd love to see it coupled with a 12,000-square-foot childcare facility downtown. That would be stretching, I'm sure, our ass, but that would be a huge public benefit also. Also, seeing union contractors downtown. There, for too long, we've had way too many non-union general contractors rule the market, and to see union contractors start to crack that mold, you know, there's two or three under construction right now that are being done by union contractors. And that, to me, is, it's not only generational for those families, but it's also a huge sustainability issue. And I appreciate that. You guys have gone that route. I would like to see AB 1763 fully explored and come to some decisions if we could use it as a huge benefit on this project for more housing. I know it's a complicated issue, and I know there's a lot of financial components tied to it, but I think to step back and see what we could get from this state law could benefit the city substantially. The jobs-housing imbalance, of course, is an issue, and I know that Harvest has their heart in the right place. They are regularly trying to push the envelope. The parameters of this project have been set by the City Council. And as we move forward with our general plan, I think it's becoming clearer and clearer that addressing zoning and land use are going to need to, might need to happen to start to crack our housing imbalance issues. As far as the architectural design, the residential component is starting to grow on me some. I concur with comments from other commissioners. I think it, I think it's got the ability to be an attractive building that presents itself as a residential component. It's, it's okay. It's not spectacular. But I think we should, we should embellish it some to give it some more uniqueness and attractiveness. For the commercial components, I'm really struggling. I think this design is becoming much too prevalent in San Mateo. I think we are following a trend that started three or four years ago, and they are attractive buildings. Some of the materials are nice. Yet I think we've, we've, we're going down a road which is becoming more of the same. And I'm really concerned about, about it in this part of the city. It reminds me of 20 to 30 years ago, when almost every project in California had to be Spanish Revival, and it just became too much. And finally, after many decades, people said, wow, we have enough of that architecture already. Let's look elsewhere. I'm not saying the, these buildings are unattractive, but they're not inspiring to me. I really like some of the ideas that Keith Weber continues to bring to the table. I would love to see some classical architecture down there. I don't think you need, I think you need to acknowledge, or be acknowledged for using mass timber, which is a nice product, but I don't think it needs to be used as an architectural feature. To me, it's, it's now, you know, the hot new thing to have, and it's something you want to show off and be proud of. But I don't think, I think eventually that phase will pass, and it will become more of a norm, and it's not going to be the new toy on the block. And I don't mean to discount the architectural firm at all for their efforts, yet I think it doesn't need to be a prominent feature and a reason why you have so much glass. I'm a huge fan of brick. I think we've gotten, we're getting to the point in downtown San Mateo where we don't need more brick. I think we need some more classical architecture, and I think it will make the city, as some people have already said, the city's already eclectic. I walked downtown this morning, and I love all the different small stores, storefronts. It's, each one of them is just as interesting or more interesting than the last, and it really breaks everything up, and it makes your walk more enjoyable, and you just, I get a better feeling out of it. I know that the general plan wants to create walkable, livable space. And these types of buildings are what I have been used to walking in front of for many years in San Francisco, and it was fine. But you don't get the warm feeling of being invited into the shops, because the massing, to me, isn't, isn't, it's too much. It, you don't, you don't have the same connection with the buildings. I do want to see some distinction from the buildings that are built currently and are scheduled to be built. Should one or both building designs take inspiration from the otherwise, from or otherwise related to buildings in nearby downtown historic districts? Yes, I think one should, and I think it should be the commercial building. I like the location of the access driveway. Yet Drew, who is a very educated young man, comes to us regularly and points out that when we have grade separation projects, it's going to affect some of these buildings. And you know what? He's most probably right. And it probably won't happen for 20 years, but something will happen. And every time that I'm on Railroad, I always get the feeling that I'm not supposed to be driving there, because it is so compact. Now that we're using that roadway as a much more active road, I think it's good, because people will become more used to using it. But again, I, you know, 20 years, we might be saying, hey, Drew was right. Now we got a problem. And I, and I can't say you can build all of these projects downtown with a possibility of changes, but I think his point should be well-taken. And, you know, be real, that something will, will happen along that line. The public realm seems fine to me. I am not a big fan of, so, as has been mentioned, the housing on, on the Al Camino Real, that was low-cost housing. To me, it's kind of shocking that they went from, the ground floor and the second floor were impacted by the railroad, then all of a sudden, two or three, three or four years later, they got a railroad in their living room. You know, this isn't a joke for those buildings. And the exact same thing could happen with the residential component here. And I understand why the city wants it built there, because they have control of that. But that's a real possibility. That's become an issue for that, for that community, and likewise, it could easily become an issue here. And I don't know how you would go back and... it could easily become an issue here. And I don't know how you would go back and implement an even higher degree of noise abatement than what you will do in this original build-out. But you know, there's concerns there and I think there should be concerns about what will happen with the railroad. Yeah, I don't really have any other concerns. I would like to stress my desire to see 1763 examined here and see what possibility it could have. I know that, or I have seen that some developers are more likely to add additional residential to their property, to their commercial property, and they've been able to make it work financially. But, you know, again, this being a study session, I would hope that the group would be open to looking at furthering the housing component here and see if you can make it work. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So this is a great conversation. A lot of interesting components here. So I'm going to focus on the design questions at hand and not really talk about the jobs, housing imbalance. I mean, I think there certainly are some ideas about how you could, I mean, I'm not sure that the housing is, that the idea is that the housing has to be maintained on that site, or could it extend further and then reduce the size of the commercial? And I mean, I just said I wasn't going to discuss that, but I mean, there are ways to do that. I don't know what the ramifications are for that, but I did want to say, I spoke with the developer this week and it was really helpful. I was able to see more of what the design intent was in that brief discussion that we had. And I appreciated learning about the concepts of, you know, using mass timber and the warmth of that and the texture of that and the desire to have that transparency. So I, you know, I hate kind of cutting off people's presentations, but I think that we all had a chance to understand, you know, understand the application and the packet pretty well. So thank you for that. So let's see, a couple of things before I talk about, I guess, design. As always, the public comments were helpful. I especially thought the comments about the grade separation at Railroad Avenue or at Fourth and Fifth, I guess, is, yeah, is a concern. I don't know what the timing would be on that, but it would, some mitigations would have to be made, I guess, at that time to address all of that access issues. The, oh, I also just wanted to say, yeah, I'm glad it's a union job. I thought it was, I will take note, all of the members of the carpenters' union probably have to be on the job site at 5:00 AM or 6:00 AM, so they're, so hopefully they got the message that we appreciate that it's a union job. So let's see. I also wanted to note that, you know, I understand, as we've kind of commented on, that this is, you know, this really is somewhat conceptual. It's early design or, you know, design development, schematic design, I guess, probably schematic design level and that, you know, there's still, this is great that we have this opportunity to provide these comments because I think there's still a lot that can be worked out and a lot that, you know, can be improved upon. This issue of the historical aspect of B Street, what I was looking, with the word I was, that was coming to mind for me as I was trying to formulate my thoughts over the last couple of days, was blending. And, but I also like Commissioner Wiggins' use of the word balance because I think, you know, those are two things here that we kind of need to pay attention to. I appreciate a lot of aspects about the building, but I also appreciate the comments of the public and, you know, I think there's a balance or there's some blending that could take place. So I don't know if I should start. I guess, so my comments are going to be fairly short because there's been a lot of good discussion here, but I have a couple of sort of specific things. And actually, is it possible to pull up the floor plan of the, it would be the later set of plans that show the, I'm going to start with the residential. Yeah, so the residential. Could we go to the, like, the third floor level or the second floor, either way? I guess that's a great, yeah. So, well, I guess I should have started with the exterior, but I'll just go through my comments and we can leave this on. I mean, the building doesn't really look residential in that it's, I don't feel like, from what we can tell at this point, there's not a clear kind of welcoming entry front door. And I'd like to see more, more definition of a welcoming entry and lobby that, you know, that feels like you're coming home. I think that, I'm sorry, I guess I should have you go back to the elevations because maybe I should have that instead of this, if I'm going to go in any kind of order. And that's okay, actually, that's fine. That's fine, too. You know, so one of the things I was thinking about, how to create a little bit more of a blending into the context of B Street. And I think that, you know, we looked at, or I talked, I looked at the ideas of, you know, sort of having a base to the building and then, you know, a body and a cap to the building. There was a reference that somebody made to the kind of, you know, the cornice at the top and the, and I like the recessed, there's elements that I like and there's elements I think could be improved, like the, I like the recessed piece we're seeing there on East Fourth, but the cornice I didn't even really notice. I mean, I think it could have a, it could still be, you know, spare and not highly detailed, but still have kind of what's a traditional, like, base to the building and maybe a cap to the building. And there's a little bit of that going on, but I think that could be improved upon to read a little bit more of a blend. So then, I guess if you could go back to that plan, then I had a couple of thoughts about the plan. Yeah, thank you. So I understand the constraints here, particularly if we are keeping the residential, like, within the county, I mean, within the city property footprint. And then, you know, you need to get, you know, spaces on, units on two sides of a corridor, but, and you end up, you know, it's not quite, so I understand the constraints. I mean, it's a smallish space, but we still want to create some kind of open space. However, I feel like this open space at the second level of a seven-story building with five floors up above it is really not someplace that's going to be that great. I don't, and I don't know, maybe it means someone needs to study it more. Like, is there ever going to be any sun in there? Maybe in the morning hours, coming from the east side there into that portion, that East Railroad Avenue portion, but very little sun throughout the rest of the day. And I don't think that makes for that great of a, that pleasant of a space for folks. I think, I mean, it's a good generous space, which is good. I don't, I guess I don't quite get the blockout of the, the, can't think of the word, the blockout to the lower garage below. That is a detraction from the amenity of this terrace. I think that isn't necessary even, or maybe it's some planter that happens along the commercial buildings so that the, you know, the residential and the commercial aren't quite so, you know, next to each other. So I'm not sold on this. I feel like, I don't know, I'm not sure how else to do it because I see the constraints, but it's not going to be very sunny. I think that you could incorporate other kinds of open space. There could be some, I guess for lack of a better word, articulation of, you know, something along the, like, at the lobby or at the entry. The other thing that came to mind was, I don't know how feasible this is, but if we look at like the neck, what I guess is like the third floor on the right, you know, you come out of the elevator and it's walls to the left and the right. And so if you go to the left, you're basically just seeing the stairwell door. If you go to the right, you're basically just seeing a unit door. And you could, you could create some views out. You could create that hallway having a window at the end of it and that unit is slightly smaller. You could come out of the elevator and have a corridor that, or a space that opens up to Fourth Avenue and, you know, even has a small balcony there. I think there's some opportunities there to provide, you know, these residents with a little bit more than just a hallway and a bunch of doors and, you know, a not very sunny outdoor space. So I would push a little bit more to get, to get some views to the outside, to get some sun brought in to the corridor or the lobby or the, you know, just the public areas, just to kind of create a little bit more livable space. And along the same lines, if you look at the units on the right, they're those kind of unusual shaped ones that, I don't know if they'd be studios or one bedrooms or, I'm not sure, but, but there's, you know, they're going to be really dark units. They're not going to get much, unless a sun, you know, shade study has been done and someone, you know, can show that there's going to get some sun. But I think the, in particular, those kind of angled ones, but all of the ones that look into that terrace, I don't think there's a lot of opportunity for sun in some of those four units or just daylight. And to me, that makes, those two middle units would be kind of depressing to live in for me. So I think we owe the residents a little bit more than that. We should push ourselves a little bit more to create pleasant sunny spaces with, you know, fresh air and daylight. So, okay, let's see if I had anything else I talked about. I mean, I understand you don't want to, you know, maybe it's not appropriate to add a lot of balconies around here, although not far away, just down towards 101, there are plenty of, I think it's the Metropolitan and, you know, there are other communities as you go down the street that have outdoor spaces. This is more downtown though, so it's, you know, not exactly the place where you'd want balconies. Okay, so I think that's it on the residential. I just, I mean, I think it's, I think it's exciting to have 100% affordable and to have the, you know, the lower floor with the amenities that, and the self-help for the elderly. I mean, it's a, it's a real opportunity in that respect for the community, so I like that a lot. Okay, so then to the commercial, I guess we could go back to the elevations. So I think, again, it's like kind of maybe that idea of how do we maybe blend a little bit or balance a little bit. And, you know, again, I understand it's, you know, this is a study session. It's early in design, you know, there's more time to be spent on it. I like the brick. I think that it, what it reminds me of, and I think it's kind of what Commissioner Nugent was talking about, like, the kind of South Park neighborhood where there's these brick buildings. I actually worked across the street from it, like, before the Giants Ballpark was there. So it's been a few years since I worked in that neighborhood. I don't know when that ballpark went in, but anyway, I really like the brick and the kind of punched openings with the, you know, I don't know, they look like maybe potentially black molins or something. They remind me of like, you know, kind of the sort of industrial or warehouse kind of look with, you know, metal windows from that era. I guess I'd like to see more of that. I just think that those, you know, those little, you know, I mean, they're not little. I can understand the scale of it. It's really large, but I think it could have more continuity to like wrap that brick, maybe, maybe across the top of the entrance and punch not that whole big elevation and then wrap it further or maybe wrap the first floor. I'm not sure, but I'd like to see, you know, I think, I think we could, we could provide, you could provide more of that brick facade that would help address some of these questions about kind of historical elements. I guess, I think the glass and the transparency to the mass timber is great. It's going to, you know, it's going to be a nice product for sure. Really, I mean, it's exciting to use that, but I don't know that it, and I guess I do like butt joint glass, but I feel like they're a little bit disparate here. And you could continue the same, rather than go with like a butt joint curtain wall system, you could go with, you know, a similar system that's being used in this middle portion where the entry is or, you know, or in the brick elements. And I just, I think it would be appreciated to tie them together a little bit more instead of this juxtaposition of such disparate pieces. So I think it's got potential, definitely, but that, I like, oh, okay, so a couple of other things, I guess. I like the corner of Fourth and B Street. That's, that's great. That sounds like, you know, it does seem like kind of a, that's sort of a hub almost, or it could be created into sort of a hub. I don't know that, I don't mind that it's not happening at Fifth and B. I feel like I'd rather see it focused on one corner and not both. Again, I feel like, you know, trying to do too many things is a little, is, you know, gets confusing or gets to be a lot. However, having said that, if we look at the scale of the building, you know, from one corner to the other is an entire block, so that's, I guess that's debatable about, you know, there's room, I guess, to do one thing from one side to the other, but I feel like it does tie the project together to have a little more continuity and to focus on kind of one corner. Yeah, and so the terraces, they're really exciting, but the reason I push back on the residential is that these are some really exciting terraced pieces up at the, you know, third, fourth or fifth level that are not really public spaces, I don't think, or I'm not sure if they have the opportunity to be public spaces. But, you know, the residential building doesn't have that and, and yet we managed to have it here in, on two corners. So I feel like it's kind of a lot and it could be, it could be focused on B Street and Fourth and not on both. That's what I think about that. Yeah, I think I talked about, I like the large punched openings in that brick wall, kind of a historic warehouse district building. Oh, okay, so the middle portion, I just briefly commented that I think, you know, the pattern of the rhythm and the pattern of the openings within the brick portion are different from in each of those three segments that we're looking at. And I don't know, there's an opportunity to create more of a regular pattern between those things and you could, I'm not sure about the middle portion. I think I'd rather, as I said, see the continuity or create something there that shows us that that's the entrance. Maybe it needs some, you know, covered entry piece. I'm not sure what that would be, some metal shed or something, something that is less modern for the pedestrian to enter and creates more of an entrance there. Whether it be continuing that brick or whether it be breaking that up with a, with a, you know, some shelter above the entry somehow, partway up that elevation. Let's see, I think those are my comments. I don't have any comment on the driveway. I think it's acceptable in the back. Seems like an appropriate location, other than the concerns about, yeah, railroad's really narrow and I don't know what happens in the future with the grade change or during that construction, I guess. I know how long the other one went on, at 25th, it went on for a long time. on for a long time. Let me see if I had anything else in here. I, I guess I always wonder about parking and, I always question, don't like people, like, people that have, people that are, you know, that need affordable housing, that are, you know, working class people, you know, we, whoever, you know, we all, I guess I just wonder, like, how realistic the limited parking always is. I just, I mean, lots of people need to get to their jobs at nighttime or, you know, at restaurants or at, you know, job sites or, you know, all kinds of places where transit doesn't go. So, and that's not necessarily, maybe we don't need to give up on, on reducing parking, but we don't have enough transit in our state to really, you know, handle everyone's scenario for getting to their jobs. So, that frustrates me. Just want to make sure I didn't miss anything. I think those are my comments. Hopefully that was helpful and that's all I had.
Through the chair, I, I had two discussion things that I wanted to comment on. One from Commissioner Patel. And then, the other one, it was based off of some of your comments that I, I thought about. And it, it's talking about the residential building. Sure, I'll start with, you're talking the open space for the residential building. And this was something that I thought about, but didn't, wasn't planning on mentioning because I didn't want to redesign the building. But, your, your comments emboldened me a little bit. I want, would you be able to bring the floor plan up of the residential building that shows the, the commons outdoor space? And I thought the same thing that you did about the light down there. It'd be pretty dark. And, and my, my thought is, well, it would be better if the open space was on the seventh floor with the four, replacing the four units in the interior, because then you would, you would buffer the sound from the, from the train. And then, you could add additional units between the property line and where, where the, where the garage is and just extend the building all the way to that property line over the garage instead of, and then you could add one or two units on either side.
But you wouldn't have any, so you would just have a light well?
Yeah. I mean, that's what's there when you account for the parking garage entrance. You don't, there's not open to the street.
I mean, like, for the angular ones, the four units in the middle would stay as, as, yeah, I guess it wouldn't change that.
But you would get a little bit more light into it because you're taking out the interior on the seventh floor, the interior units, because that would turn into your-
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes. Got it.
That's just what I was thinking in terms of that.
Yeah, that's an idea.
But, again, I'm not trying to design the building. I just want to suggest it. Because that is a concern, the, the light down there. The other comment I just wanted to mention was something that Commissioner Patel said about the building, you know, you'd like to, you'd, you'd actually prefer if the building was the in continuous all, whole block. And you see that a lot in some of the more recent develops, in the developments in the past 30 years. One example is the Pearl District in Portland. There's a lot of whole, brand new buildings that were entire blocks. And they tend to be massive scale relative to what you see, kind of the finer grain of like B Street, where the individual properties in B Street tend to be about 50, 50 feet wide. For, so each building is about 50 feet wide. And when you go into even older cities like Boston or Europe, you get down to like 16 feet wide buildings. And it's really range between 16 and, 50 feet is kind of the maximum you want for a, a lot of your city. When you get beyond 50 feet, it starts to get really monotonous for buildings. And it's okay occasionally on certain blocks, like, it's not, you can power through it as a pedestrian. But, you, you really want to have, you know, it's best to keep it 50 feet or less for distinguishing different buildings. So that, I actually prefer seeing, for the most part, three different building looks, that it feels like different buildings on the commercial portion of this, of this project. And I think that you've done a good job so far getting in that direction with the brick and the, and the glass part. And I think that even a third element would even be better to be more in rhythm with the 50-foot widths that you see along B Street. And it actually, to me, just was more fitting for pedestrian environment. The scale just works better when you have your buildings 50 feet or less, or at least they appear to be that way, where you have a massive block. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about Paris, too. So, you look at, you look at the Van Haasman-
Don't forget New York.
Yeah, you, New York, too, similar. You look at the parts of Paris that were redone in the 1800s. And there's some really beautiful, larger buildings. But, they pale in comparison to the Latin Quarter, which is amazing. It's so much more textured, it's more intimate, it's, that was not destroyed. And so, there are great, you know, there's great buildings. They are, they, some of them are bigger, some of them are bigger than 50 feet. But, there's some, the buildings are, are far more detailed and articulate, like, the detailing, it's not, I'm not talking about massing articulation.
Right, right.
And you're just not gonna get that probably in 2022. It's just not gonna happen. So, I think, I think that there's workarounds. And I think, to me, a better solution is to, is to coordinate with the, the size of building, the, the horizontal size of building properties that's already on B Street. So, that's my two cents. I, I don't wanna, yeah. It can be, it can be done, but if it's, if we keep doing it on every, on every block in our city, it's gonna become very monotonous. And I think that, that's an unfortunate aspect of, say, the Pearl District of Portland. So, which is what that happened to. Which is a great place. It just could have been better.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any other comments? Looks like you do.
No, I, I was just gonna say, to echo a little bit of what you said, you, how you do the ground plane is really important, right? I think having well-defined entrances to the different shops, making them feel human scale is, as we've all talked before, is really important. But, when I look at the reference buildings submitted by Keith Weber, when I look at the buildings that I've experienced working on in New York, like, you've got a very different ground plane with that level of detail, with those definitions about the different entrances and the different bays. And then you've got floors, you know, three through X, where there's a much more uniform look and that finer architectural detail to bring visual interest. And, you know, that's, that's just, it's different personal preferences. But, I, I also understand your point about not wanting to make every block feel that way. We do, there is a building across the street that is, if, if built, will be much more uniform. There's the Gramercy Kitty Corner, which is articulated at the finer level of detail, but not at the mass level of detail. So, you're right, there's other buildings surrounding it that are, are a little bit more solid.
Okay. Hopefully that's helpful. That's a lot of, like, woo, all over the place. A lot of comments for you. So, if there's not anything else, I think we can close that item and move on to reports and announcements. Thank you very much. Thanks for staying through all that. And we'll, we'll close that item and go on to reports and announcements. Are there any?
Yes, thank you. I have a few reports and announcements. So, our planning commission meeting for October 25th is proposed to be canceled. We don't have any items, so there's a little bit of breathing room. November 8th, we are expecting one to two business items. One might be a public, actually, both might be public hearings. And possibly the due process training that we were looking at. So, perhaps another 6:00 PM start time, depending on what items we have on the agenda. We continue to ask you to hold November 29th. We are still talking to the applicant to see if we can make that date work. So, we'll let you know if anything changes on that date. A couple of other updates. So, the city did list, receive its HCD letter on the housing element. So, staff is reviewing that and working on, perhaps taking another study session to city council to discuss additional policies that may be, may be considered as part of the, the second round of updates. And then on the general plan, the city council will be looking at the GOPAs for land use and community design, possibly on November 7th. There are a number of new state laws that have been signed and staff is actively reviewing those. They do affect parking near transit, housing projects that might qualify to be established by right in certain areas, as well as new provisions for ADUs. And so, staff is at this point looking at all of them to see how they interplay with our local regulations and what kind of code amendments may be necessary, and also how they affect projects that may already be in process. We also have, I believe, next week, going to council, reach code updates as well as building code updates. So, this January 1st, 2023 is an exciting time because that's our three-year cycle when those codes are updated. So, there will be new requirements for those as well. There is going to be a planning commissioner academy in March. Registration will open in December. So, if you could please let us know by the end of November if you would like to, to attend that training. And Ashley and Mary will work with you to get you signed up for that. Those were all my updates. One quick note, additional note, just wanted to confirm that we will have quorum for November 8th, since that is a confirmed meeting. Does anybody have any conflicts? Nope. Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We can adjourn. Thank you. Good night.